All right, so I'm good to go. Um, good evening, everyone. Hold on one second. There. Sorry about that, I was echoing. Let you, um, I want to welcome you all to the August 26th, um, City Council and Local Contract Review Board meeting. Mayor Lube is with us this evening, she is joining remotely, so just to assist in the process this evening, I will be facilitating as council president, but certainly glad to have not only Mayor Lube, but Counselor Shaw and Counselor Robbins joining us online this evening for our packed house. So with that, I call the meeting to order, and City Recorder Craigor, please complete roll.
Counselor Shaw.
Here.
Council President Wolf.
Here.
Youth Counselor Hellick.
Here.
Counselor Godussey.
Present.
Counselor Who?
Here.
Mayor Lube?
Here.
Counselor Robbins?
Present.
Counselor Schleck?
Here.
Thank you, City Recorder Craigor, and I want to thank Counselor Schleck here with helping with last minute with my laptop, so we all didn't listen to my echo. And with that, would you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and this is the call, are there non-agenda items this evening? City Manager Stockwell? Council members? No chit-chat about Taylor and Travis or anything? Okay, all right, with that, we will move forward to public comment. So this evening, first, I want to remind everyone of the public comment protocol. I'm pretty confident we will have a number of speakers this evening, and so the protocol is listed up on the slide. The one thing that I do want to emphasize is you will be given a two-minute limit, and I need you to adhere to that, or you will be shut down at that time. So I just want to set that up front, that I don't mean to cut you off, but that is a timeline that we will adhere to this evening. So at this point, the call-in number is (503) 966-4101, and those wishing to comment should call now to get into the queue. Anyone present wanting to comment should have signed up on the public comment form at the front of the room when you enter into City Hall. So this evening, we had two written comments that were received before noon on the deadline, which was yesterday, Monday. Those two were regarding the increased noise from vehicles going through neighborhoods and food court pod regulations. Moving forward with public comment in person, I will ask City Recorder Craigor, do we have anyone signed up this evening to speak?
Yes, you should have those signing sheets there.
And I do.
You do.
Okay. This evening, I will start public comment with the first one on the list, and that is Jenny Lopez.
Can I have a minute?
Yes. Thank you both, Jenny and Lenny, for that. So then, and I think you both know, right? So we'll stop at two and then start up again. I think if you want to speak collectively with four, then you, I will allow that, so thank you.
Would you please turn on your mic? Thank you.
Thank you. Council and Mayor, thank you for hearing us today. My name is Jenny Lopez, and I've stood here before, and I know a lot of you have heard our story. I've shared my concern about the food cart regulations, and tonight, I'm here again urgently asking you to please save our food pod. I'm speaking on behalf of my business, my family, the car owners and their families, the workers we support, and the customers who gather at our food pod every week. And tonight, I am their voice, and many of those people are in this room, and a lot of those families are represented. However, I will be the only one speaking tonight because we do value your time. My husband and I started Love Eat Smash Burgers on the side of 99 in the little red food cart in 2023. That cart grew into something bigger than we ever dreamed, a pod where families come and gather and neighbors connect, and entrepreneurs can build their dreams. This pod is not just about food, it's about community. It's about Tigard. What was once a kind of boring, forgotten shopping center at Hudson Plaza, it has now become alive. That shopping center used to be empty, it is now full, families come, people walk, people gather, and people are excited to eat at our food cart, and many businesses are all leaning on each other. Our pod truly does reflect Tigard's missions of connection and economic growth, but that future is now in jeopardy. As written, the current regulations threaten to shut us down as early as September 1st. So, right as we are preparing to open our indoor seating taproom, tap and table, and the truth is, is the tap house will not survive without our food carts. So, we had started our food carts, and we had started this process well before these new regulations hit in January. We had started building, we had started looking for funding, we had got architectural drawings. But in order to be grandfathered in, written, we are still required to meet a whole list of these new regulations. It's just impossible, the financial barriers alone, and I can give you many examples, it will force us to close. So this is not about special treatment, it's about real, a real workable path for our food cart pod. Sorry, it's hard not to get emotional because this is our livelihood. This is about real families that are in this room tonight. Ian and Cassie, they are from Bread Breakers, they're raising four children, under four. They have a fantastic food cart. I am also here speaking for Johnny, a single father of a teenage son who moved here from Hawaii just a couple years ago, started a food cart, and they're sharing 100-year-old family recipes with us. This is about Josh and Alfredo, who are true examples of not giving up on their dreams and perseverance, and had to overcome a lot to reopen West Coast Tortas. And this is about me, I'm a Tigard voter, I'm a resident, I'm a mom and a business owner who has poured everything into this and truly trying to build something special for this community. Council and Mayor, without your action tonight, or Tigard, we will truly lose something unique and special that we've worked so hard to build. This is the first food cart pod with year-round indoor seating for our community. It's built by locals for locals. I just invite you all to please come see our pod, meet our families, try our food, see what we're truly about and what we're trying to protect. And I'm just asking, we don't want handouts, we're just asking for a fair way that we don't have to shut our businesses down for a chance to survive. Please save our pod, protect our families, protect our businesses, and protect what we've built together. And please represent us, please represent me. And I just want to say thank you to staff and the city manager who did come out and meet our food car owners, and he walked our pod, and I just really appreciate that, so thank you.
Jenny, thank you, and thank you also, Lenny. And just as a reminder, this is a, not an agenda item this evening, it is, the purpose is public comment for you to share that, the comments that you wish for council to hear, and I did want to acknowledge the time that City Manager Stockwell has, has also spent connecting. So I want to thank you for your time to come up here. So thank you, Lenny. So I'm going to apologize in advance if I say this incorrectly, but Koksul Axila? And please correct it.
Actually, she, she mentioned everything, how Axila, but.
Okay. No, thank you, and I appreciate that, but thank you for standing up. So moving on, then the same with, is it Adam Aaron or Run?
We are.
You guys are together? Okay, thank you both. And again, Jenny, thank you for your comments. So our final public comment this evening is from Lindsay Voorhees. So Lindsay, please feel free to come up, and you will also have two minutes.
Good evening, members of council. First, I want to thank you all for the positive steps that you've already taken in addressing homelessness while also working to maintain safety and livability here in Tigard, particularly with the implementation of the Good Neighbor Agreement, the monthly safe parking data reporting that's been emailed, as well as posted on the website. These measures really foster greater collaboration and transparency as we collectively work towards resolving this crisis. I appreciate your willingness to engage directly with residents to address concerns that come up as homeless programming that we are hosting expands, and we continue to sort of learn step by step how to navigate it. However, with just compassion shelter beds already full, the situation is becoming urgent and very visible and concerning to a large population of our neighbors. They've shared with us that they're concerned about the potential for camping at Public Works to escalate. We've seen a big increase in the camping there, and we don't have any evidence that there's been a proactive plan or any sort of planning around how we're going to ensure that needs are met by some of our most, for some of our most vulnerable residents while also maintaining safety and livability. If there's not a plan put into place soon, we really see this becoming quite difficult to mitigate and manage over what we've seen in the last few months. So I urge council to prioritize this issue now, to develop a clear plan, a balanced strategy, one that provides compassion, of course, for those in need, but also ensures that safety and well-being of the broader community are not being sacrificed as we work carefully and thoughtfully. Taking action now will prevent more serious challenges down the road. Thank you for your time, we look forward to seeing our elected leaders take meaningful steps on this pressing issue.
Thank you, Lindsay, and I hope that you're staying this evening for the conversation that is part of our agenda.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward, public comment, phone or video. Mr. Wang, is there anyone in the queue that is wanting to speak by phone or by video?
No, the queue's empty.
Oh, my, thank you, Mr. Wang, so we'll jump back to public comment in person, because apparently I missed one that had signed up. So, sorry, so is there three pages?
Yeah.
Is this my test? No, Lindsay was just the only one. Okay, okay, all right. I think we are moving forward, and with that, I'll move to the City Manager Report, City Manager Stockwell.
Thank you very much, we have a slide to show up. It is back-to-school time in the Tigard community, and tonight, I wanted to share one example of how Tigard employees are helping out. Two Tigard public library teammates shared books, crafts, and library information with 148 children cared for by resource families in the foster care system at the back-to-school event hosted by With Love, a Tigard-based nonprofit. The event was modeled after a farmer's market with end-of-summer festivities including music, ice cream, a bouncy house, and face painting, paired with essential school supplies that they got to pick out themselves, all at no cost to those families. So, thank you, and that's all.
Thank you, City Manager Stockwell. So we will now move forward to the consent agenda. As most know, the consent agenda is used for routine items. Information on each item is available on the city's website and in the packet for this meeting. These items may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Council members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action tonight. We have the Non-Destructive Water Main Condition Assessment, Leak and Detection Contract, Library HVAC Upgrade, Installation and Controls Contract, and the Tigard Street-Fano Creek Bridge Replacement Design Services Contract Amendment. So with that, council, do you have questions, or I will entertain a motion? Counselor Godussey.
Thank you, Council President Wolf. My primary question was on the Fano Creek Bridge Replacement Design Service Contract Amendment. It looks as if the primary cause of that amendment was the changes in the 100-year flood plane, along with the sewer drain complexity, and I just wanted to get confirmation that that was the underlying reason for the increased price.
Hi, I'm Zach Morris, Senior Project Engineer. Those are probably the two of the biggest reasons, but there was a laundry list of reasons, including just how long it's taken to work through those, but those two by far are the largest cost impact so far.
And part of my ignorance, but remind me when the change, I know that we talked about the change from the 25-year evaluation to the 100-year flood planes, but that, when was that done? I know that's well beyond the scope of the city, but just for context.
Well, really, there was a discrepancy between the design standards, which said that the travel lanes needed to be, and I apologize, I'm going off memory, off, above the 25-year event, and then the actual development code, and like floodplain code talks about the 100 year. So we identified that probably a year and a half ago, but we were trying to manage within the current contract budget, and then it got to a point where we were running out of funds with the consultant, which is why we hadn't come to council previously to ask for more related to that.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Godussey, thank you, Zach. Okay, with that, further questions? Counselor Who?
Thank you, Council, Council President Wolf. Yeah, I, I, I just want to thank city staff for providing such detailed information on all the projects in the consent agenda, and for the Tigard Street Bridge Replacement, as Counselor Godussey and Zach pointed out, there was many enforcing circumstances, and I would just want to thank staff for managing these challenges and being, and, and, and it also showed that they're being responsible store of our taxpayer dollars as they move forward, so I just want to thank them for, for doing all the great job. So with that, I will move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion was made and seconded, any additional discussion? With that, City Recorder Craigor, please conduct a roll call vote.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Council President Wolf?
Yes.
Counselor Godussey?
Yes.
Counselor Who?
Yes.
Mayor Lou?
Yes.
Counselor Robbins?
Yes.
Counselor Schleck?
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda is adopted by unanimous vote of the council. Thank you all. And with that, we'll move forward to our first presentation, was, with, which is an update from Washington County Sheriff Massey. Welcome. See, we're both wearing our pink for the end of the summer, man, I love it. Welcome, welcome.
Bam, that is so much better. Thank you so much for having us, I really appreciate it. As promised last time, we wanted to make sure that we got our annual report in your hands earlier than we were, went earlier than we did in 2023, and provide some critical updates on the services that we're providing to the entirety of Washington County. If you wouldn't mind hitting the next slide, please. I'll re-center us back to the beginning, which is where I really like to begin all the time, no matter where you live, we serve you. We do manage Washington County's only jail, providing service to roughly over 600,000 residents. We are the primary first responders for our rural, unincorporated, and contract cities. Those include North Plains, Cornelius, Banks, and Gaston, and my vision is for us to be the safest urban county in the state of Oregon. Next slide, please. I would like to just add that for the, anyone in the room or on the screen, if you would like to scan our QR code, or go to WCSOannualreport.com, you can download the same annual report that we've provided to the councilors and the mayor. Next slide, please. One of the things I want to level set is that it is our partnerships and our relationships that have helped to contribute to public safety in Washington County, I believe, more than any other thing. And our relationship with Chief Jamie McDonald and the Tigard Police Department is no exception to that. It is that partnership and those relationships that help us serve in a way that honors all of our cities and our urban, unincorporated areas. We manage Washington County's only jail. We anticipated, I don't know, last time I was before you, and I don't know if everyone was present for that, but we had had three housing units closed because of a shortage in staffing. We anticipated being fully staffed if we stayed on our trajectory and, around 2027. I am thrilled to say that we are fully staffed, and we've been given permission from the Board of Commissioners to overhire, understanding that that, that full staffing does consider that we lost 10 positions during this year's budget general fund reductions. So, that is also why we are engaging in overhiring, so that we can work through the natural attrition that comes from retirement and people not being successful in training. We still do have three housing units closed, but that is not because of short staffing, that is because we are undergoing right now critical infrastructure repairs. So we are getting a brand-new roof, we are getting all-new HVAC throughout our jail and law enforcement center, a new fire suppression system, and all-new hot and cold water piping systems throughout. That will help bring us up to code essentially in areas that we just, we had leaks happening, and the stuff that we had going on wasn't really providing a safe and secure environment for the adults in custody that are under our care. So super excited about that, and it has been ongoing, and it will be ongoing through 2026. We do hope to have two of those housing units open, though, around the beginning of next year, because they're conducting those services, all of it basically at the same time, with an upstairs and downstairs housing unit, and then once that section's done, they'll move adults in custody over there, move, empty out two more housing units, and go all the way down. One of the things that has helped us with our beds, however, is that we engaged with a vendor to do a jail capacity study. What that means is that we asked someone to come in and look at our, really our forecasting for our population through 2055, and give us an assessment on what it would look like we would need as a county, and the only jail in the county through that time. They came back with numbers that were close to 100,000, we, or excuse me, 100,000, holy cow, that's a lot of beds. Wow! I might end up having to move in there if that's the case. A thousand beds, as opposed to our 572 now, gosh, 100,000. We are not going to ask the taxpayers to fund 100,000 jail beds, I promise. They looked at about 1,000, we will then take that and look at what are best practices across the country and internationally for servicing adults in custody, to include behavioral health services, substance use disorder services, those areas where, it might be anger management, parenting classes, GED classes, and how can we help them transition out into the community to be much more successful than even what we're doing now, which it really looks like we are providing services that most of the country is not. And so it's not good enough to think that we're doing it better than many places, it's just that we need to continue to evolve. And what this capacity study has done is it gave us a starting point, so that now we can go out and assess what other people are doing in other places that are really forward-thinking and providing more robust and holistic services for the adults in custody they serve. But it's not just about the adults in custody, it also is providing a space where our staff want to work and don't feel like they are also in an institutional-style space, because ensuring their physical, mental, emotional wellness is also critical, so that they can thrive through this career, which can be very difficult on our staff. In case you don't know, in Oregon, PTSD is presumptive after five years of being a first responder legislatively, and so it's incumbent upon me and our team to make sure that we are setting people up for success in a holistic fashion from the day they start. I'll touch briefly on pre-trial release status, just to say that we received a $750,000 grant that will help us bring our electronic monitoring from an outside vendor that did not monitor overnight or on the weekends into the jail division, so that we have 24/7 monitoring of those adults in custody who are out of custody, either in a pre-trial fashion or for their sentence, and making sure that they are not in restricted zones, and if they are, that we can identify that in the moment and get resources there to provide safety for all of our communities. And while that seems like it might be jail-specific, we do have people that are serving sentences in pre-trial in all of our cities, and that will allow us to make sure that we get emergency resources out there if someone's in a restricted zone or near victim homes and things like that. Next slide, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members, I'm Chief W. McRae with the Sheriff's Office. I'm going to touch a little bit on our inter-agency teams and some special teams through the Sheriff's Office. Our, our inter-agency teams are, are critical for the safety throughout the county. No one single agency can provide all the services and keep the community safe, so those partnerships are crucial in the, in our agency teams. By pulling our resources and expertise together, we can provide consistent and professional services throughout the county. Our inter-agency teams ensure that all of our residents receive the high level of response and professional support, no matter where the incident happens in, in the county. Chief McDonald and the Tigard Police Department are great partners with us, and continue to be great partners with us. That partnership strengthens the collective ability to, for us to protect and serve. When agencies join forces, the whole county benefits from a more reliable and effective public safety. Our crisis negotiation team, our tactical negotiation team expand that ability to peacefully resolve high risks and. resolve high-risk and complex incidents. Our mental health response unit is particularly valuable in supporting individuals who are experiencing mental illness or crisis. These teams are trained, equipped, and ready to respond countywide and to deal with the most challenging safety incidents. Next slide, please. Covert, a newly formed team, inter-agency team, was formed in 2024. This team's focus was to address gang activity, criminal networks, and gang violence. Their priorities were prevention, intervention, and enforcement. As you can see on the screen, since this team has been formed, they've executed 68 search warrants, made 49 arrests, and seized over 282 firearms. The Sheriff's Office secured grant funding for a NIBIN terminal. A NIBIN is a national integrated ballistic information network. This technology allows us to analyze shell casings from firearms and link those to specific firearms. So this benefits all the agencies in Washington County. If officers respond to a scene, they can collect those shell casings. We can then analyze those and possibly link those to cases, expediting the investigation and prosecution. Intelligence-led policing ensures we are responding to the immediate threats and addressing the community's concerns. Next slide, please. Our search and rescue. These are highly-trained youth volunteers ages 14 to 17. They complete a 12-day search and rescue academy that's held June of each year for real-world missions. These cadets also meet the Oregon Search and Rescue Level 3 certification standard. There's four standards. Level 3 allows them to stay on-scene for up to 12 hours. They're skilled in urban and rural rescue operations. They respond on an average of 48 missions per year across Washington County and the communities. They locate missing persons from children to elderly loved ones, hikers, and hunters. They save lives and provide closure for families, responding rapidly to high-risk, time-sensitive situations. They've also searched for downed aircraft and emergency beacons, provide crime scene and grid searches when needed, and they'll train and collaborate with other search and rescue teams across the state. These cadets are overseen by a full-time Washington County Sheriff's Office search and rescue staff while they're on their missions, and they're building the leadership skills and confidence for each cadet. Most of these cadets go on to be either in law enforcement or other leaders throughout our community. Next slide, please. We have two projects that are managed by our search and rescue team as well. Project Lifesaver and Help Me Home. Project Lifesaver is an active-tracking program that uses a radio frequency bracelet to quickly locate missing vulnerable individuals. Help Me Home is a database for photos and other identifying information that are accessible with all Washington County law enforcement. For Project Lifesaver, as you can see, we have 22 registered members, and Help Me Home, we have over 100. For the cost for Project Lifesaver, for the device, it's $300, and it's a quarterly fee of $75. So to start up one person, it'd be $375, and then an ongoing $75 every quarter. The article that's called out on the screen, this missing endangered person, this was an elderly gentleman suffering from mental illness who had missed some critical medication. The actual missing, he was actually missing two hours more than what we originally were told. Our search and rescue advisor responded and was able to activate the Project Lifesaver equipment. He was located in an urban neighborhood with green space and forest ravines. The man was located at the bottom of a 30-foot ravine with serious head conditions. Through the coordination with our deputies in search and rescue, they were able to extract the gentleman and get him medical treatment that he needed and return him home. Next slide, please. Our ROVT team. This team, as technology has advanced, so has the Sheriff's Office trying to keep up with technology. This provides us real-time intelligence and surveillance for situational awareness during critical incidents. It also reduces the risk for first responders, and when I say first responders, I'm including our K-9 first responders as well, supplying accurate unseen information, so we can rapidly make decisions. They've flown over 500 missions with only 25 drones in service. They also do crash reconstruction, taking area photos for precision and efficiency. They support our tactical support team locating armed and barricaded suspects. They support our search and rescue in looking for missing individuals as well, and our K-9 operations. These drones are carried in the vehicles with the officers and deputies, so it's a quicker response. The team right now is composed of 11 deputies, three Beaverton officers, and one Hillsborough officer, and we're expanding our team with other partner agencies. All of our pilots are FAA-bisened and recertified every two years. They have ongoing training, which they have to complete at least 10 hours of training in multiple drone platforms. And we also adhere to the strict Oregon law and FAA regulations governing drones usage for law enforcement. Next slide, please. This is a quick video of our drone in action, a couple of small series of drone footage. Could you go ahead and play this video, please? This first one is a couple of individuals who are, do not want us to contact them, and they're running from us. So as you can see, they're trying to hide in the forest wooded area there, and the drone is keeping contact on them. With the thermal imaging that you're going to see here shortly, the heat transfer, so it makes it easier for us to continue to track them. And as you can see, they're climbing out and slowly starting to give up. This one here is a couple of individuals who, I believe, are burglary suspects. They're running from us again. I don't know why. But they run through some neighborhoods, and one of them jumps on a bicycle. You'll see he'll start moving really quickly here. And this allows us to direct our officers and deputies where those suspects are located at and easily apprehend them. As you can see, he ran right to us. This is a drone footage of one of our tactical missions where we were able to break the window and send a drone inside the home to search for the suspect versus sending our officers or deputies inside the home. Next slide, please.
So the thing that is impactful about just that last one is that we have drones that are really small as well, and so we can get them into those little spaces that previously put our deputies and officers significantly at risk to go in there, not being able to get eyes on anything inside. And so now we just have the ability to keep our canines and our deputies safe in a way that we couldn't before. And as technology continues to evolve, it's going to be very important that we continue to evolve with it. And it really has brought an escalation of safety in ways that I never could have imagined when I first started in this work. As we look forward the rest of the year, our main priority at the Sheriff's Office has been and will continue to be the Public Safety Local Option levy and making sure that our community has the critical information that they need to make informed decisions in November 4th on the ballot. Our Public Safety Levy covers the Sheriff's Office, the District Attorney's Office, community corrections, and juvenile justice services, and is roughly 16% of our budget. And so it's very important for us not to just go out for a levy to maintain services, but to really communicate to our communities that we will expand our services with the increase in levy that we are asking for. It would be an increase of 19 cents, which would lead roughly about $20, a little under $20 a month, and the $1,000 assessed value for the average property value of around $346,000. And so one of the priorities for us as we look at enhancing our services is that covert team that we referenced earlier, the Community Violence Reduction Team. I cannot think of a team who has had as much impact in as little time with over 200 firearms seized just since October, when there's only two detectives assigned to that team and two detective sergeants. And so expanding resources for the critical work, I think, is going to help us ensure safety across our community. Next slide. That is what we have for you. Now, what questions can we answer from you? It's not 100,000 beds.
Just to clarify, no, thank you both. And the video just, you know, while entertaining, but really drives the point home of not only keeping those that are working to keep us safe, but keeping communities safe, because you can so quickly see where individuals are. But with that, I'll start with my fellow councilors to see if they have questions for you. Councilor Goodusci, I'll start down here. Thank you.
Thank you. No questions, but I am very impressed at everything that you have been able to do. Councilor Slack and myself have been able to go to the jail and do a tour there.
Excellent.
The amount of effort and work that's put in with the amount of resources that you have is absolutely phenomenal, so.
Wow, thank you.
Sorry, we were going down. I didn't want to presume. Also, shout out to Macon de Salvo and Leadership Tiger for coordinating that tour. It was a really educational, informative experience for me as a city councillor. And like Council President Wolf said, the drone footage is very, very impressive, and it reminds me a lot of some of the drone operations that the Tiger Police Department has. That's been fully on display on National Night Out recently. Yeah. My one question is about this time last year, one of the big topics was the putting in place of new drug deflection programs, sort of in the post-Measure 110 world. And I'd love to hear, just from the Sheriff's Office perspective, what the current performance and status of those programs look like, just in general.
Want to touch on that?
I can speak to it briefly. I don't have the data for you, but we do have some participants in the program. It is actually working. We are still working with all of our partner agencies to kind of work out all the other bugs and kinks out of it. But we have, right now, we have a lieutenant assigned to it that's creating training for all the officers and deputies. They do have a program coordinator or program manager for the deflection program that we are meeting with on a weekly basis, or monthly basis, rather. But again, I don't have the number of participants that we have in it, but it is working.
Yeah, and one thing that I will add to that is just that our biggest roadblock right now with that is anticipating funding to keep it going. And so Washington County, for instance, the funding formula didn't quite match our population and the resources that we are using. And so we are working with the state and with other county government to try to figure out how we can reassess the funding formula to ensure that we have enough resources to keep it going.
I have two questions that are mostly just curiosity. Number one, who and how are the drones controlled?
We have drone pilots who are deputies and corporals, and they belong to a special team. They do this in addition to their regular workday, and if there's a call-out, then they will go out with their drone and respond to it. They go through an incredible amount of training in the beginning through the FAA to become drone pilots, and they just manage it. They will get up in the middle of the night if there's a need call-out, and they will respond with the drone in their car to help bring that escalation of safety.
Am I missing anything?
Yeah.
And then, do you guys know how many search and rescue missions you guys have had this year so far? Because I know you said 48 last year, but I'm curious about this year, too.
I don't know this year, but I sure can get that information to follow up. Yes, that's a great question.
Thank you, Youth Counselor. Councilor who?
Thank you, Council President Wolf. Thank you so much for coming here, and I too did a tour of the jail with our community academy with Maddie in the back, Maddie Bauer, and that was very impressive. Yeah, like my colleague, I'm very impressed by the drone technology, and I'm glad that you are using it. But as you know, that this past legislative session, there was a push to do away with search warrant for use of drone, and that was ultimately not passed. And during the process, I heard from many Washington County organizations that represent immigrant and minority organization, they were really worried about doing away with search warrant. I think the comment I heard back is that they had a great relationship with Washington County and our Tiger PD, but they wish there were more dialogue, communication of why that was put forward. I know it was put forward by, not by our local law enforcement, but the message is that they are not necessarily opposed to get away with search warrant, but they just want better understanding and more dialogue of why that was needed in the first place. So I just want to provide that feedback. It's like, you guys are having a great relationship with our immigrant and minority community, and I'm so thrilled by that. But there's more room for communication, as you know.
Oh, I couldn't agree more. And if you are aware of specific community groups or organizations that would benefit from us communicating that we might not be thinking of, please share our contact or let us know, because I will tell you, we will show up and just respond to whatever, you know, questions are out there. And I don't always know where to go or who to talk to, or who would benefit from information. So I would love to partner and figure out how we could reach our communities better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll convey the information, so thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Council who? Councilor Shaw?
Thank you, Council President Wolf. And I had two questions, one that Councilor Slack had actually answered, so I won't repeat that question, and thank you to our presenters for answering it and for the presentation. I was not aware of Project Lifesaver or Help Me Home, so I'm wondering if that's something we could partner with our Tiger Senior Center. I have a father who's 89, so he's luckily in good health, but there's a time, I'm sure, where there'll be some reduction in memory, and this is just a vital service. And you had mentioned the cost of what the Project Lifesaver was and perhaps even the Help Me Home, but I just didn't get that. I was wondering if you could repeat the cost, and then also if we could partner with you to get that information out. Thank you.
Yes, the cost for a Project Lifesaver is $300 for the device and $75 quarterly. So just to get it started, it would initially cost $375, and then $75 every quarter after that. And the quarterly, it's just for maintenance, battery replacement, those type of things for the $75.
And the other one is free. It's voluntary, and it's free, and we would love to partner to get that information out. And so I look forward to any way that we could push that out more robustly. I took care of my father for eight months while he was on hospice with dementia, and if I hadn't worked at the Sheriff's Office, I probably wouldn't have known about the services that we provide. And so I look forward to connecting later on.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you so much.
Councilor Robbins, I don't see your hand up, so I'm going to move forward with Mayor Lou.
Thank you, Council President Wolf, and thank you for being here today to help share so much information and to sort of update us on everything. I just sort of have one general question. You did a really great job about talking about the upcoming levy and funding challenges and those sorts of things. And I'm sort of wondering, what is the biggest public safety challenge that you would say is facing Washington County, you know, and Tiger as well? What are the obstacles? Other than money?
Funding. Oh, see? No. There you go. So you want the second obstacle, not the first one. That's what I heard, Mayor.
Yeah, we all know, I think we could all raise our hands and say funding is a huge challenge. But, you know, after that, what would be your next biggest challenge?
It's probably still resources as far as, you know, deputies or police officers and having enough people to do the work in a way that doesn't burn our folks out. For instance, an- For instance, at the Sheriff's Office, you know, we are running with minimum numbers on shift to where if anyone were to call in sick or be away in training, then people are having to work overtime, and that's happening every day on every shift. And so, what that does is it just leads to some burnout and an inability to really have some work-life balance and for people to feel connected to their community outside of their work. And so, I still think that our, my most critical mission is the retention of our extraordinary staff, and immediately behind that is recruitment to get more people in, to show them that there is so much honor and nobility in doing this work, and that we are in our communities, with our communities, as part of our communities.
Thank you. I think historically, you know, that we've had those conversations with our Tigard Police Department, and every month we get a report of how many shifts are on minimums, and it does create so much burnout. So, thank you for talking about it and bringing light to it.
Well, one of the things that I don't think gets mentioned quite enough is that it probably, it can seem selfish to say that the retention and focusing on our staff being my number one priority might feel like it's at the exception of the community. But actually, I believe that if our staff are well physically, mentally, emotionally, spiritually, financially, then they will serve well, and they will, everyone in our community will receive a better quality of service because as the person is responding to their fifth critical call in a shift, they're going to be responding in a way that honors it as if it were the first, because they are well. So, that's sort of how I'm seeing that.
Thank you, Sheriff. I think well said on that. Counselor Robbins, I saw that you raised your hand.
Hello, yes, thank you, and thank you so much for this information. Really interesting. I also toured the jail. It was pretty amazing to see. I wanted, was hoping you could speak just a little bit on the situation that we have in Washington County with the unhoused. We hear about it a lot, we're going to discuss it more later on tonight, but I think sometimes laypeople's perception may or may not be accurate. We might think it's better or worse than it actually is. So, could you speak just a little bit on how are we doing as far as helping our unhoused community? Are we making progress? Is it getting worse? Do you have other ideas percolating about what we can do, or what are you learning about from other parts of the country? I would really love to hear that.
That's a great question. I can speak to sort of what we are doing at the Sheriff's Office and with community partnerships to make sure that we're providing some holistic wraparound care. First, I'll speak as it relates to the jail. When people come into jail who are unhoused, we do everything possible to do warm handoffs with our community-based organizations as they're transitioning out, to make sure that they're not transitioning out back into the street and that there are some resources. We even take that down to the minutia level where we don't release people in the middle of the night when MAX or other transportation resources aren't running so that they're not just walking around houseless with nowhere to go. Additionally, we have a deputy who is full-time and other deputies who work in a collateral status with our, with other county partners and then community-based organizations. It's called a HOPE Deputy. It's our houseless outreach deputy, and they are partnering with Health and Human Services and Housing to work alongside of them, not necessarily as an enforcement action, but as an avenue to build relationships with the people that are houseless and then connect them to the resources that are most appropriate for them based off of their individual needs or issues. In fact, just last week or the week before, I spent time in Hillsborough, for instance, talking to some business owners with the district attorney to talk about how we might provide, and Hillsborough Police Department, to figure out how we might provide some better services, even to the community-based organizations that are working in those neighborhoods because the level of service wasn't where it needed to be to ensure that the businesses weren't being negatively impacted. And so, it really, our approach has been to work with our business communities, to work with our community-based organizations, and to work with our city partners and county partners and Housing and Health and Human Services to identify areas that we can support people more holistically. I really believe that, and this is just me not having data in front of me, that our houseless situation has gotten significantly better since we were able to pass some ordinances that allowed for us to clean up the encampments that we had in Washington County. And now, it really is about identifying more resources out in the community to get people where they need to be. And some of those resources aren't just limited to housing. So, there's so many different issues with, you know, behavioral health or substance use disorder, and so, finding individual services for individuals who are experiencing homelessness is critical.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah. I want to thank Council and thank you both for being here. And, you know, Sheriff Massey, as our next agenda item is houselessness, it continues to be something that weighs so heavy on all our hearts and our minds, and I know these critical partnerships are essential as, you know, as the county covers kind of all the territory as well as our urban areas. So, just appreciate your insight and your thoughts in coming and spending time with us today. So, thank you.
Thank you. And if there are things that come out of this next meeting or additional meetings in the future that it would be helpful for us to be able to partner, please don't hesitate to reach out, because we are here for that. And I do think that together is how we are going to make it better.
I think we'll likely take you up on that. Thank you very much. So, our next item is our houselessness update, and I would like to have City-City Houselessness Liaison Cohen come forward and Strategic Manager Kim, oh, no, Kim is sitting just in the front row. Thank you, Kim, to give that report. Thank you, Megan, and welcome.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Megan Cohen. I am the homelessness city-county liaison for the City of Tigard, and I'm here tonight to provide you all on an update on homelessness in Tigard and seek your direction on some options moving forward. Unfortunately, we're not going to solve homelessness this evening. Every year, I think we find ourselves grappling with the situation in a different light, and there are so many contributing factors to the situation we're currently facing, as you'll hear tonight. I do want to remind everyone that we're talking about real folks that are struggling in our community right now and searching for stability and safety, and I only have a short time to present this evening, so I'm going to keep it pretty high level, but we're going to have other conversations ongoing on this, and I'm happy to provide follow-up and answer additional questions as we move forward. So, with that, I will jump in. Next slide, please. So, starting with homelessness in Tigard in this moment, one of the things that we've seen has been an increase in the number of people that are camping on the Public Works lawn. Through the winter, we probably had between like three to five people there. We're seeing closer to 30 to 40 people now on the lawn. As you will hear, I see a direct correlation between that and some of our system capacity pieces that we're experiencing in this moment. On the lawn, street outreach has been providing regular support. They went out last week to assess how many folks had Washington County coordinated entry, and it was almost everybody, which tells us that folks are in Washington County, they're waiting for services. The majority of those folks were on the shelter waiting list, which is quite extensive. And this past weekend, we experienced inclement weather, extreme hot weather, that actually activated inclement weather shelter beds at Just Compassion from Sunday, Sunday to Monday, and we saw that the majority of folks that were camping on the lawn went in at that time. So, very clearly shows us that folks want resources, they want to be able to get back in their, on their feet, and they want to be inside. We also have some data from the latest point-in-time count that more than half of the folks surveyed that were homeless in Washington County became homeless in Washington County. So, more than half. It doesn't mean that everybody that we're seeing, this is a regional problem. We're seeing people move regionally, and our solutions are also regional. But we know that we are having folks experience a lot of hardship directly in Washington County with the economic conditions and are becoming homeless because of that. On the enforcement side, Tigard Police Department has been really proactive about enforcing our time-place manner. They are there in the morning enforcing the time. As I was thinking about police enforcement and the capacity that we had, Tigard has two dedicated officers to sort of address homelessness situations here. Beaverton has six, Hillsborough has 10. So, just to give you an idea of the capacity asks that we're asking of our officers amongst other duties, they have also been really proactive about working with patrol to cover gaps since they're not on all the time, trying to make sure that we have that full coverage to talk to folks and enforce our time-place manner. There are several challenges with this location. One, it's very visible. We're also running out of space on the lawn, and during the winter, we experience it being extremely muddy and wet, especially towards the center of the lawn. We've also seen several benefits to this location. Largely, people are camping where and when they are allowed to, which is something that we ask of them with time-place manner. So, this is currently a place that is allowed for camping, and that is where they are choosing to camp and doing it during the times that we ask. That doesn't mean, again, everybody is following that, but the large majority we are seeing are complying with that. We've also seen it reduce the number of encampment cleanups that we've had in sensitive lands in our parks in the last year, and it has consolidated our time-place and manner enforcement. So, police are able to go make contact with folks in that area and then address other areas as well. And it provides that centralized place for outreach to connect with folks and to let them know when resources are available, so folks don't get lost in the shuffle. On the eviction side of things, we are hearing from our service providers that they are seeing so many families become homeless in this moment, right now. They are all really surprised by the number of families that they're seeing. This is largely, of course, we continue to be in a housing crisis, there are a lot fewer eviction prevention resources, and we're in a rent-burdened community. So, kind of the perfect storm. Everybody has really been prioritizing families. Nobody wants to see families with children sleeping on our streets. We don't want to see anybody sleeping on our streets, but a lot of the resources are getting driven towards trying to get folks somewhere safely before the next step, the next shelter bed opens, the next housing referral is available. And I think this is something that's just less visible, but a very present piece of the homelessness situation for our providers in this moment. We have a couple services that are responding to that. One is our Library Social Services Coordinator, who's doing a lot of great work navigating with folks and trying to connect them to resources. Of course, the Supportive Housing Services that we have, and then also our Safe Parking Program, which is often a bridge for people between sort of that eviction and getting into the next service. So, I wanted to make sure to mention a few of those. Next slide, please. So, bigger picture, looking at homelessness in our region, we, right now, are in a Supportive Housing Services system that's at capacity. There are no available shelter beds in our system. We also don't anticipate additional shelter beds coming online, and our Community Connect Coordinated Entry System has very long waiting lists. And the way that we work through that, there is, can be months-long wait for people to get into shelter as they work through that referral list. We are also seeing sort of the outflow of people from the system slow down as we have less affordable housing, market rate and even regulated affordable housing. And funding for housing vouchers has largely dried up, which helped make those market rate units affordable for folks who are low-income or on fixed incomes and don't have those other sources of income. We've also seen a reduction in eviction prevention across all funding sources. Locally, we had a reduction, SHS cut their eviction prevention resources. Community Action has put their program on indefinite hold. We saw the state cut theirs by 50% and also significant cuts at the federal level. So, we have nothing preventing inflow into the system. Eviction courts are very overloaded, and where we used to have a lot of providers helping provide some gap coverage at those eviction prevention courts, now we have maybe one that is in that room. We also saw from the point-in-time count, which I mentioned earlier, that for every 10 people there housed, we're seeing 15 become homeless. And again, this is just economic conditions, people having a really hard time paying for rent, groceries, healthcare, and not having sort of that relief that maybe one time something goes wrong and it snowballs and they become homeless. I have had the chance to talk to my colleagues in Beaverton and Hillsborough. They're facing very similar issues as we're seeing in Tigard. They are also seeing increases in folks camping outside their shelter properties and having to address things with their time-place manner enforcement as well. Next slide. Just briefly, I wanted to give you all a safe parking update. We're, this is as of July 2025, but we are just about to hit a year of the Safe Parking Program in September. As of July, we had 13 households that were served by the program. Six households had transitioned into housing or an alternative program, and we currently have two sites, but we're working on a third host site. And we've been really glad to have Just Compassion as a partner in this work. They've been really responsive to issues and concerns, and we continue to, I think actually, we had two folks transition into housing just in the last week, so that's really exciting. They are finding that there, it's taking a long time to get people into housing. I think on average, four to six months, so slow turnover, and we'll do a more full report as we end this year of safe parking. Next slide, please. So, I wanted to talk about some next steps, and first on there is considering time-place and manner ordinance changes. So, in discussion, some of the options that we could explore, one would be prohibiting camping on city property. This is something that would align with our peer cities, Beaverton and Hillsborough. It could also lead to more people camping in our Parks and Nature areas and increased encampment costs. It has the possibility of reducing teammates' burden in cleaning up that public worksite on a daily basis, and it will likely decentralize the enforcement and case management pieces that we're currently see, currently seeing. One other ordinance change that we could consider would be reducing the allowable camping hours to 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. We're currently at 7:00 PM to 9:00 AM. Again, this would align with our peer cities. Almost all of the cities are around that 7:00 to 7:00. Beaverton's, I believe, 9:00 to 7:30. It would allow enforcement of the time to start earlier in the morning and reduce the number of folks there later in the afternoon. that 7 to 7. Beaverton's, I believe, 9 to 7:30. It would allow enforcement of the time to start earlier in the morning and reduce the number of folks there later in the afternoon. And just to note that that does align with the hours of opening for Just Compassion's Access Center. They open at 7:00 in the morning, but would leave a gap between the library lobby, which is usually opening around 9:00 AM. Some of the other options are looking at other available resources or county programming. So for example, we could explore pod shelter with Washington County. They have some pod shelters that will come offline and are looking for some places to put those. That is something that we would need to have a lot more conversation about and would result in more centralized resources in Tigard. It could help alleviate shelter pressure by adding beds to the system. And those capital and operational costs, we would need to discuss and finalize with them, but would be covered by Washington County. So that would be one resource option. The other would be to explore other sites for managed or unmanaged camping. We would need to look at what are the management? How would we manage that? What would be the cost involved? And how would we want to enforce that? Probably, we're looking at a short-term, not a long-term solution in those situations. And there could be some site options that are maybe less visible than our current option. I think the other things on this list are just continuing to communicate our strategy in response to homelessness to the public, have some greater understanding about how and when we enforce time, place, manner, and continuing to report on our existing programs, track available data, and coordinate with internal and external partners. One of those partners is Washington County SHS, who will be presenting their annual report sometime probably early winter this year. So with that, I will conclude and turn it over to you all.
Megan, thank you for that. And I'll start to my left with Counselor Hu and work our way down there. Go to the screen and then close with Mayor Lu. And before we get started, I just want to kind of set the foundation statement that this is just such a horrific situation for so many in our community in Washington County as Oregonians and across the country. And I think we all recognize the difficulty of every individual or family. And yet, we are also charged with how we care for our employees, how we care for our community that loves and uses all our resources. So I think all of us are trying to be really thoughtful of weighing all those very important responsibilities. So with that, I will hand it to Counselor Hu, assuming that he has comments and questions. And certainly, our charge this evening was to take that out in, which was very helpful. So thank you, Megan, but also to give direction on next steps. So thank you, Counselor Hu.
Oh, thank you, Council President Wolf, and thank you, Megan. I have two things. First is, so our current time, place, manner ordinances, I believe, limit camping, they say the tent has to be 20 feet apart, and the tent cannot be 10 feet within public right of way. So I did a little Google map calculation, and I saw at the very maximum, that means we can only allow maybe 30, 35. So when you say 40, I'm a little alarmed because that means that's not compliant with our current time, place, manner ordinance. So what's your response to that?
Yeah, I would say 30 to 40 people, not necessarily tents. So we have couples staying with each other and other folks out there.
All right. So are we enforcing the like the distance requirement? Or, I mean, I know we're not having a ruler and measuring how far away a tent is, but are we at a point where we may have to do that soon? So the place is not overwhelmed with camper?
I do think there is a challenge in how much space that we have on that lawn. And, you know, would need to discuss how we want to manage that to be in compliance with TPM moving forward.
Okay. Yeah. So we might have to keep an eye on that. And as far as the time reduction, if the majority council would like to go 7 to 7, I'm fine with it. Another point I want to raise is you keep mentioning that the solution should be regional. And you are paid with the county money to work with not just only Tiger, but Twelton and Sherwood. And it would be hard for me to believe if they don't have any homeless people there. But I'm not hearing anything that they're actively doing to address their own problem. And that's very discouraging. So I talked with Commissioner Jason Snyder recently, and he said he's open to facilitating a dialogue between among the three cities to really address this so-called regional solutions, if the majority of the city council are interested in that. So I would just leave it to my colleague to see if they are interested in approaching because I'm really frustrated, right? Because Tiger, we are really punching above our weight for internal affordable housing, shelter, family shelter, save lot, and as you mentioned, two police officers. That's a significant resources that we're spending. And it's really frustrating. And I'm not afraid that Sherwood and Twelton hear me saying this. I think they should step up. I really think so. So I totally would like, you know, our commissioner to have a facilitated dialogue among our cities, because you mentioned this is a regional solution. So we really need to make that a reality, make it a regional solution. But thank you so much, Megan. I know how hard you work every day. So thank you so much. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Youth Counselor. Would you like to go?
So I have a handful of like very short questions. One is just a clarification question on Slide 3. It says, for every 10 people that are housed, 15 become homeless. When you say 10 people, every 10 people that are housed, do you mean 10 people already living in houses or 10 people who like get a house or like buy a house?
So it's like outflow and inflow for our system. So 10 people that are currently experiencing homelessness in our system become housed. So through like a voucher or through permanent supportive housing or whatever those options might be. And then for the 10 that are exiting our existing homeless service system into housing, 15 more folks are actively becoming homeless and entering our system. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Great question. And if camping out on the Public Works lot ends up being not a thing anymore for people, where would you expect people to camp out?
I think the primary spot would be public right of way.
Okay. Where would some examples like that be? Like nearby the area?
So public right of way, typically, we're talking about like sidewalks. And there are restrictions in terms of what they can block or can't block when doing that.
If you guys got more beds, where would they be and who would they be working? Like, would that be beds at Just Compassion or do you guys have a Tigard specific organization?
Shelter beds. So right now, there are some changes to the system that are anticipated, such as like Hillsborough Shelter will come online sometime in November. But there are other like existing shelters. Cloverleaf is planned to come off. So that will probably balance. We probably won't add any additional shelter beds. There are, like I mentioned, the pods are sort of these non-congregate shelter beds. So rather than being in a shared setting, there are individual pods that can be placed on a site. And if we did that, that would, we would work with Washington County, and then they would contract a provider to manage that.
Okay. And why do you guys need the tents to be like 20 feet apart? That seems like a lot.
There are manner stipulations as part of the time, place, manner ordinance that respond to House Bill 3115. So there's some specifics in there about distances.
Okay. This is just a comment. I do think that keeping the 9:00 AM for camping is probably best because that does align with the library. And I think that people should have access to the library if they are not able to camp out just personally. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Youth Counselor. And I will go ahead and ask my questions and then continue down the table. Just to clarify, great questions too. Thank you. But on the Just Compassion, I think I heard you say, Megan, while the library opens at 9, the Access Center is open at 7.
Correct.
So there would be, which I think when we set time, place, and manner, there wasn't that opportunity. Okay.
Correct.
So I actually agree with Counselor Hu, and I would be for aligning our time structure along with our neighbors. And I also had spent some time just trying to better understand shelter beds in Washington County. And as I look into 26, as I appreciated Liaison Cohen kind of talking about what we add here, we retract here, I think there'll be roughly 370, 369 shelter beds. Of those, Tigard already has 137, which is roughly 37% of the beds. We have save lots. I think Beaverton might be the only other partner that does that. We also have one of the Access Centers. I think Aloha is the other one. So I say all this because, back to Counselor Hu, we really have lifted hard and heavy to provide resources. And I'm really ready to push back and say that we have done more than our share. How we collaborate with our next door neighbors, how we collaborate with our county just really needs to be escalated and that this is untenable for Tigard. And then our options, right? I would like to see the camping move off of Public Works. I don't see the suggestion of right of way as a viable option. So then I want to push harder, think differently, creatively. How do we create a space in Tigard that works, that makes sense for all? And I'll have an answer for that, except to say I'd really like to explore that more and think differently about that. And then again, support Commissioner Snyder working with us to really figure out how we move forward together because we're doing a lot of hard work. And with that, and I also want to point out that if 50% of the tracking says Washington County, then 50% is not Washington County. And then we also, I'm still not thinking that we're clear within Washington County where they're originating, you know, from that. So there's just lots of things that I'm eager to learn more about. And I chatted with our senator and our representatives, and I know that they're very interested in this situation and how we move forward and work on these issues. With that, Counselor Schleck.
Thank you, Council President Wolf, and then thank you, Megan, for the presentation tonight. Yeah, I'll just, I'll be honest. I always find this to be incredibly frustrating topic, and I think my colleagues have sort of hit on it. I think there's a lot of rhetoric that says this is a team game, but then we don't necessarily see a team effort with things sort of across the region. So I fully support Counselor Hu and Council President Wolf's suggestion to work with Commissioner Snyder to try and facilitate a more of a regional response within this portion of Washington County. And I also support reducing the allowable camping hours, 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. You know, I can understand the interest in wanting to ban camping on city property, but I think the Youth Counselor put it very well, where are they going to go? And if people start camping in right of way areas, we're going to start getting ADA complaints, just like the City of Portland did. And people are going to start complaining about a whole bunch of other issues there. So until we have a realistic logistical solution for where we can house these folks or temporarily place them, it feels like Public Works is still the most viable option, unfortunately, at this time. So I'm aligned with my colleagues at this point. The one additional thing I wanted to touch upon was the pods topic. And this may be, Kim, you may be better to field this one because that discussion was June of 24, correct? Or Megan, was that before you?
I'm aware of the conversation.
That was right before I joined. So I'm aware of the conversation as well. But I recall that pods came up as part of that discussion, and the council ultimately chose not to pursue it at that time.
That's correct. Yes.
Do you recall generally, or maybe my colleagues who were there can inform me, why that decision was taken at that time? And if they think that those reasons are still relevant at this point?
Mayor Lu, would you like to comment on that?
Yeah. So what I will say is, it was a very similar conversation that we were having with everything that Tigard was doing. And we wanted to sort of see how our additional shelters were working out. But we also felt that Tigard was doing more than its fair share, and we weren't open to pod shelter. We were, if the county wanted to do a pod shelter, we were asking other cities to step up.
Thank you, Mayor.
And those are all my thoughts at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I recognize the growing frustration in our community as we start to see more of those visible impacts of houselessness, especially around sensitive areas like around the Public Works building. But at the same time, we can't ignore the real human need that's driving this crisis. Tiger's role is to act as opposed to react to all of these things with solutions that are both lawful and going to be compassionate. We're committed to protecting public health, safety, and livability for everyone. And really, that means enforcing reasonable standards while continuing to encourage access to these services, shelters, and support like you've been doing. So it's not really about choosing sides. It's going to require a multifaceted approach, which many of my fellow counselors already discussed. And it's really about leading with that sort of resolve, with that compassion in mind, with a clear path to protect the future of Tigard overall and our whole community. So I do agree with my fellow counselors in looking at those regional solutions as it's a statewide problem. And we have been sort of punching above our weight in terms of, you know, actions that we've been doing. And in looking at the time, place, manner ordinance specifically, one of my concerns, if we were to remove the city property, is finding a way to do it in a legally defensible way. If we were to prohibit it on that city property, is it constitutionally compliant? Well, the answer would be yes, if we allowed the public right of way. But I feel that that would actually be much, much worse as everyone else is always ready, brought forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Shaw, you're on top, so I'll start with you.
Thank you, Council President Wolf. I appreciate it. And to my fellow counselors and their thoughts, as well as Megan, the presentation, and Mayor, I concur with your summation of why the council did not support pods at that time. I do concur with my fellow counselors. We have punched way above our weight. We have been talking for quite some time about regional solutions. We've been waiting for our fellow cities, Sherwood, Twelton, and Lake Oswego, to step up. We have done much more, I'd say, than our fair share, but it's the right share. It's the right thing to do. It's been the right thing to do. I do also support the 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM so we can align with our very fantastic and terrific Just Compassion that's doing the work that we've asked them to do and that some on our community have asked them to do. In addition, I support working with Commissioner Snyder to have those regional conversations with those cities who are, I'm sure, willing to support teamwork, just perhaps may not have been as active in the past. And we could help lead the way for them to become more active. And as far as pods, I still would concur that that is not a solution at this time, and that we do need to continue at Public Works until there is a viable solution. And hopefully, those both in the chamber today and community members can help us really sit down and think about what the solutions could be. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shaw. Counselor Robbins?
Hello. Thank you. First, yes, I agree. Thank you, Megan, so much for this presentation. I think it's great to point out that a lot of, this is stemming in at least in part, the increase that we're seeing this year in the cuts and other issues that we're seeing coming down from the federal government. We're all feeling those cuts at the state level, at the city level. We're worried about, you know, making sure that we get our funding right. People are losing their jobs. People are getting less support from social services that they used to have at very from social services that they used to have at various levels. And so this is hitting everyone, some people more than others, and that's a large part of why we're seeing this increase in homelessness. Then there's the fact that we just don't have enough housing, and I don't know the solution to that. It certainly isn't to just kick people out of the community. Also, we can't just go tell landlords, "You have to lower your rents," right? So we have to figure out how to protect our business people, our residents, the people who want to use the library. It's a very, very frustrating situation, and I have a home. I can't imagine how difficult it must be. I try. But to be that person who perhaps just lost their job, or just lost their home, or their rent has increased, and now they can't afford it. Or they had an injury, or, you know, I could think of a myriad ways that something like this could happen. So I am very, very sympathetic, and I hope our residents can also be sympathetic. But at the same time, it's frustrating, and I don't know what to do. I agree that we should change our hours, as everyone else has said, to match our surrounding communities. I also agree that this should be a community-wide solution that we're seeking, and that we need to see our other sister communities helping us so that it's not just us doing this, which it's not just us, but Tigard does have a lot. Megan, I would love, if you could address, to put you on the spot a little bit, not perpetuating this rumor, but I hear a lot of people say things like, "Other communities are actively sending their homeless people to Tigard, or perhaps driving them right up to the border and saying, 'Go that way.'" And I just want to talk about that. Is that something that we're seeing? Is that accurate? Is that not accurate? Could you address that for us?
Sure. Yeah, I think, as a lot of you have pointed out this evening, Tigard has been really committed to providing resources and being part of the solution. And we do have, you know, we've got two family shelters. We've got the adult shelter, the Access Center, Inclument Weather Shelter now, as well as part of that. In addition to just all the other surrounding things, having pantries, having other support systems for folks as well, I think folks are here because there are resources, and folks are seeking those resources. And certainly, there are communities where there are no resources at the moment, and the option is to come here. We are also, you know, part of this Washington County coordinated entry system. So in terms of referrals and flow of where folks go, they go through that, go through that system, coordinated system, to get a referral to the shelters. So we have folks coming from other parts of Washington County because they got a referral into Tigard Shelter, just as somebody here might get a referral out to other parts of the county as well, too. So I definitely think there is, you know, some movement, some shared between the communities. Folks are going to where those resources are. And I think we really saw that in terms of folks utilizing those resources during Inclument Weather and also regularly using the Access Center services we have as well. I think it's just a mix, and it is really hard, I think, from the, I want to acknowledge, to get data, to get city-level data. The data collected on this is at the Washington County level. Wherever I can get city data, believe I'm asking for it. I'll get you guys what I can. And so I think it's just, it's one of those things that's harder to know. I think one of the only places that we have sort of that direct local data is around safe parking. And in those situations, right now, almost all of the folks that we've served have been local to Tigard, and we have more local control over the intake and placement process for that. So that helps explain that as well, too. So, not sure if that's a very satisfying answer, but that's kind of what comes to mind with that question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Robbins. And I guess with that, I'll just add one more point, and then certainly have Mayor Lube close us here. I am curious, when it comes to data, we are a data-driven council, but if there's an opportunity, if that's a conversation that is part of that with Commissioner Snyder, or how do we do that? How do we better understand where we are with? And I know, as I have tried to collect data, I appreciate all that you share, Megan, but it does become a challenge to kind of get to some of those root pieces. So with that, Mayor Lube, please close us out here.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for sharing your thoughts. I want to say a couple of things. You know, it's incredible, this is an incredibly challenging topic for everybody involved. It's challenging for our houseless community, many who don't want to be houseless. It's challenging for our city employees, who have an increased workload to manage this situation. It's challenging for our community members, who feel like they're paying an all-time high, and they're just seeing this problem get worse. But I think it's helpful to have the information that for every 10 people we're able to get off the street, 15 then become houseless, which is, I mean, let's be honest, it's a horrific stat of what's going on, that we have so much money being poured into a system in Oregon, and there's so many resources that are being pulled back, that it feels like cities like Tigard are stepping up to do all of these certain things, because homelessness is not one solution. It's all of these things that we're doing, and it feels like the rug is being pulled out of us. So I just, I want to acknowledge that this is an incredibly challenging situation that is hard on everyone, and just thank everyone for having this conversation. It's challenging, I think, for us also because a lot of these financial decisions about where the funding goes and what's going on is happening at different levels. Tigard doesn't directly fund a lot of, you know, the shelters that we have. It comes through S.H.S., it comes through grants, it comes through these sorts of things. And yet, what happens is, it looks like it's happening on our doorsteps, and so our community wants us to be able to solve it. But it is a regional problem and a regional crisis. And I certainly understand people putting the correlation of additional community members on our Public Works lot with, "Well, it must be because Just Compassion's there." Just recently, either this week or last week, I was talking with mayors across the three counties, and everyone is seeing an increase. This is not a Tigard-specific thing. It's not because of Just Compassion. Everyone is reporting increased numbers, which is, I think, a truly frustrating situation for all of us who are trying to manage it. At my meet with the mayor last week, one of the community members actually asked a question, and I want to thank Kim Ezel for being there and helping me fill the holes of information that I didn't have. But it ended up being a really meaningful conversation that we had with community members of the pros and cons to Tigard's approach to time, place, and manner, and why you can see our houseless individuals in one spot versus what happens when there's a decentralized. And I want to thank Megan for really going through kind of the pros and cons. And as far as the discussion, I'm not opposed to moving the place, but I think there has to be a designated place, because the pros, as far as being able to have consistent connection with those community members, knowing where they're going to be, not having them dispersed in our city parks, and community members coming across them wherever someone's happening to sleep, far outweigh the, you know, the cons of having it unfortunately so visible. So if there's another location that is a city property that we can go back to the drawing board, I'd certainly be welcome to that. But I'm not open to having a discussion where we say, "You're not allowed to camp here, but, you know, good luck figuring it out," and we'll, you know, then disperse our resources to be able to manage it and make sure that they're camping within the hours and in places and all of those sorts of things. I am in favor of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., so I think as soon as we can get that on the schedule, we can get that changed. I appreciate that then it would be in alignment, and our community members would have someplace to go. I'm not comfortable with a pods conversation. In fact, for the last year-plus, every conversation that I have with other mayors, I let them know, "The Tigard City Council is done doing additional work, and if we are going to have more beds, more pods, more whatever, it needs to happen in other cities, because we have done a lot." So just know that the mayors of Washington County have heard that loud and clear, and they understand that we are not going to continue to do more. And so I appreciate that everyone continues to have that perspective. I also kind of want to address a question that I get pretty often, just about, "Why don't we only serve Tigard?" Or, "Why did Tigard put some money into Just Compassion?" Or, "What is going on here? Why do we only do those sorts of things?" And it goes back to, Washington County is under a regional approach. Again, Tigard doesn't control the shelters. We don't control the funding and those sorts of things. And so while sometimes there are other residents and community members who are sheltered here in a Tigard bed, that means our residents are also sheltered in other cities, and other cities are taking care of Tigard residents. Because what happens is, when you enter into the system, if you fit the criteria and a bed opens up, they certainly try to keep you in your home community. But if there's a bed available in Hillsborough for a Tigard resident, that is where that Tigard resident is going to go to have a bed. It's not a situation in which our community members are being told they can't go into beds in other cities. It is a regional, county-wide approach. And I just, I want to make sure and reiterate that. And I think we need to do a better job talking about that. Because again, in the meet with the mayor, when we started talking about time, place, manner, and the requirements, and what's happening in other cities, the community member said, "That makes a lot of sense. Thank you for telling me. I had no idea." And I think we just need to do a better story of explaining why, and what's going on, and what we're seeing. And a better story of, it is coming down to the micro level, right? Our farmer's market has run out of matching SNAP dollars earlier than they ever have before. These are all red flags that this situation, unfortunately, is going to get much worse before it gets much better, with all of our community members who are teetering on the edge, being pinched. And so I just, I want to acknowledge that, too. I don't know if there was a question there, or just a lot of topics, but again, in favor of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., no pods, open to it moving if it's on city property. But I'm not a fan of the dispersment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Lube. And with that, Megan, do you have what you need from us?
Yes, I do. Thank you all for providing some direction this evening. I will come back to you all with ordinance change. With the, I've heard this evening that there seems to be consensus around the changing the time to 7:00 to 7:00. We can look at alternative sites and what's available and bring that back as well. And then desire to follow up with Commissioner Snyder in conversation with the other two communities, which I also have a lot of interest in as well. So those are some steps. We'll close the conversation for pods. Heard that very clearly from you all. And again, just want to say thank you all. I know, I feel really grateful to work for a city that is so committed to balancing all of the responses to homelessness here and providing resources, and look forward to coming back to you all with some other solutions.
Great. So Megan, hold on one second. We're going, you Counselor asked me to give her one more opportunity to ask a quick question.
Him.
Him. My apologies. My apologies.
You're good. I'm just curious, if we do the time change, because I've never been to the Just Compassion site, how would it be able to maintain enough, like, does it have enough space for people to be able to comfortably be there? Like, because I just worry about people being outside at 7:00 in the morning in the winter with no spot.
Me, too.
And I just, I don't know, I just don't know how big the site is, and so that's the only reason.
It's pretty spacious. They have, they have space like for sleeping when they hit Inclument Weather, for 50 beds. They also operate as no-turn-away in that scenario. So quite a bit of room for more individuals. They certainly haven't hit capacity on like the Access Center day services yet. Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Great question.
Great follow-up. Thank you. Okay. With that, thank you, Megan.
Thank you all.
Okay. We will move forward. I know we're a little bit behind, but this is a really important topic coming up and a really thoughtful conversation that was really important to have. So with that, an update on Building a Better Tigard Project with Deputy City Manager Trish. And I'm going to let you introduce your crew.
Good evening, Council. I am Emily Trich, your Deputy City Manager. I'm going to change the energy in here a little bit, keep us awake. We have a very vibrant and exciting presentation for you this evening to talk about the Police and Public Works Facility Project, also known as Building a Better Tigard. We have a number of folks in the room that will be introducing you throughout the presentation. We're going to be really efficient as we're doing a seamless flow as we present you this item today. If you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, please? Our plan is to present for about 20 minutes, and then we'll have plenty of time for questions and answers. And as I say, a number of members of our project team are in the room to answer any questions you have. I'll be doing just a quick project team introductions before handing it off to Kim Ezel for the communications, some team members from our architect group, as well as Brian Rager for Design and Construction, our own Finance Director, King, for the financial update, and Chief McDonald will be bringing us home. So, next slide, please. Next slide, please. So first, let's begin with a quick project overview. As you know, we are building a safe and modern facility for our police and public works departments, ensuring our first responders can provide critical services to the community during disasters, improve efficiency, and reduce long-term costs. This is also part of your council goal, around delivering resilient, sustainable, and well-maintained facilities, providing reliable and efficient services. You asked for a solid foundation upon which to advance the facility development, and I'm proud to tell you that we have a very strong foundation. So, next slide, please. This might look familiar. It's our original project team and structure. This is primarily our internal teammates, plus our esteemed Project Director, Dave Lins, and his team from OTAC, representing us as the project owners. That's you in the top left. City Council, who liaises with the city manager. The project sponsor team, Kim Ezel and myself, working directly with the project director. And then the three pillars that are laid out before you, Design and Construction, Finance, and Communications. Next slide, please. And this is a photo of many of the team members that will be delivering the project, from bond to construction to moving in. And here we are, all on the site at Wall &amp; Hunt Sicker, right by the Fields Apartments behind us, and across from Pozo Dog Park. Next slide. And so some of the folks you saw might be some new faces. So we are excited to have assembled the project team. So six months ago, we came before you to sign a contract with OTAC as our project directors. And now we will be giving you an update on our CMGC, Construction Manager General Contractor Partners, PNC, Pirlo Joint Venture. And you'll be hearing more about that work. You can see here some of the duties and the roles that each of these key partners to the project will be involved with. And in addition to what's listed here is, we are all hands on the bond. And so as you'll recall, just, I think at our last meeting, some of our state representatives were underscoring how important this project is, and we so appreciate their support. We'll be hoping to go to voters and making the case for why this project is so important. And as you'll see, we have an excellent team to deliver it for us. With that, I will be handing it off to Kim Ezel.
Good evening, Council. Kim Ezel, Program Manager, Strategic Initiatives. And next slide. Very excited to talk about our communications efforts to this point and what you can expect from our team going into the fall and winter months. Next slide. So recently, Council heard about the National Community Survey results, but I do want to hammer in on a couple of different points that show a little bit differently than some of our recent polling. One, most participants do still believe that the Tigard Police and Public Works Department buildings are in good or excellent condition. However, they are also aware of the bond in May 2026. However, they are also aware of the bond in May 2026, which is great. That's what we want people to know, is that this bond is coming, even if they don't know all of the details. And even with folks only being half-aware of the bond, thinking that the facilities are in excellent condition, we were really well buoyed by hearing that 66 said that they would support the bond measure. Do you want to take this with a grain of salt? These are not likely voters who were targeted for this. This is a random sample. However, these are folks who felt that they were civically inclined enough to take a very long survey, in which these were the questions at the end. We will be doing another scientifically rigorous poll this fall to assess how voter sentiment has changed and to be able to inform our messaging through the fall and winter. Next slide, please. And the fun pictures. Over the summer, we have been doing a lot of engagement. Our priority has been being out in the community. There has been movies in the park. You can see Jessica Love and I at the Fourth of July Celebration, which was very cool because we gave out frisbees. And if you were there, you would have seen about 500 frisbees with our logo being flung all around. Jessica was telling me just the other day that people still think about the frisbees and go up to the Public Works booth whenever they see her there, asking for a frisbee. So whether or not they're connecting it with the project, at least they're seeing our logo and they're enjoying it and they're coming up to our booth and hearing our spiel before they get frisbee or sunglasses. We have a couple more events coming up before we wrap the summer season. The big one being Family Fun Day, September 20th. Really excited to open up both our current Police Department and our current Public Works Facility and invite the community in. We'll have the bike rodeo. It's going to be a really fun day. We also have a couple other events, including Street Fair, Trick or Treat on Main Street in El Tigre, where we will be promoting the bond as well. This is all before we transition into more of a digital and mailer strategy going into the fall and winter. Right now, we're going out into the community where people are, but when people start going back to their homes, because it's cold and rainy, we'll be there too. And finally, we've talked before about creating a community panel. We're going to start recruiting for that in September and hoping to activate folks over the winter and have a really great push into the May, knowing that we have about 260 days until the bond vote. And so we're trying to build momentum between now and then. And that is all I have for that update. I'm going to turn it over to Brian.
Good evening, Council. Brian Rager, Public Works Director. Go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So I get to talk to you about part of the design process, and then Jeff with Scott Edwards Architects will follow me. We just, SEA, Scott Edwards Architecture, I'm going to shorten it to SEA, it's easier to say. So SEA just finished, they're finishing up what they're calling the programming stage. And that's where they gathered a lot of information from both Police and Public Works. And this was a great opportunity for all of our teams to be involved. They were invited and encouraged to participate. SEA did a great job of scheduling multiple meetings with all of our teams. And that, they called it a day in the life. So they would meet with each team at their current work site, and they were really interested in learning several things. One, how do our teams currently use the space they're in? You know, what works? What works for them now? But then, of course, what isn't working? And with a new facility, what would make it better? What I like about the process is it really, it allowed our teams to feel like they're part of the project and have some ownership in it. And the effort is really about making their space, they're the ones that are doing the hardest work out there, and making their space better, more efficient, so that they can provide that great service to the, to the community. You can go to the next slide, please. So this is an example of the types of photos that SEA took during the, during the Day in the Life tours with the various teams. So the photo on the left happens to be Maddy Bowers' office. Don't give her too much of a hard time here. So this, really, this is showing that community engagement, folks, I can show you a similar photo of Jessica's office over in Public Works. They require some office space, but they also, there's a lot of stuff. You just heard about the frisbees. There's a lot of giveaway. There's a lot of materials that get produced. So they have to, they have to store this, this material, and it's, right now, it's just in their, in their offices. The picture on the right is one of the off-site storage locations for police evidence. So you've heard the chief talk about this a lot. It's one of the critical needs of the Police Department. Go to the next slide, please. And now this, these photos are examples of Public Works. So again, SEA did a fantastic job of meeting with all of our teams. The picture on the left is, we're restoring some of our parks equipment. That's literally a lean-to adjacent to a building. You can see it's got a gravel floor. Not the greatest. The middle picture is part of our facilities maintenance space that's in a leased location down the road on Burnham Street. And the picture on the right is a view inside of the Fannell Creek House. This is currently the home of our recreation program. They need the space for just, they're using it for office space, but they're also using it for storage of all the materials that they have to keep track of. They also use it as a workspace for putting together materials for various events and classes. So again, this, this phase of the work was really important. I think SEA learned a lot. It's helping them to fine-tune the types of space we have, the types of space we need, so that they can start producing some site layout options and what the, what the final product could look like. At this point, I'll turn it over to Jeff. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Yeah, I'm Jeff Dunn with Scott Edwards Architecture. I'm an architect there. I'm joined by Sid Scott, founder of Scott Edwards Architecture. And we're just really thrilled to be working on this project with the city. It's a really great opportunity. It's a really interesting program. It's a really interesting site and location in the city. Next slide, please. So as Brian was saying, we did all these day-in-the-life tours and programming meetings, and some of them started at 6:00 AM. It's been a long process, and we've learned a lot about the city, and we've learned a lot about the existing facilities in Public Works and the Police Department. And just to provide a quick insight into where we are design-wise, it's still very early. So we've taken all of those tours and all of that information, and existing facilities, and potential for the future facility. That's an important part of it, is how we think about how they perform in the future. And then we've been distilling each group into, this is just an example slide, but it's what we call a programming diagram. So we take each group, whether it's streets or facilities or Police Department, and we break them into their kind of constituent elements, and then we lay out all of the rooms and spaces that we think they're going to need. So we talk about the size, the adjacency of spaces, the security lines between spaces, how people get from the parking lot through the lobby, through the more public spaces and into the private spaces, and what the differences and key elements of all those are. So this is one of about 12 diagrams, just like this. This will close out our programming phase. We'll, we'll end up with a tabular program too, that shows all the spaces kind of and their sizes. And then, actually, as of about a week ago, we're going to transition into the schematic design phase, where the rubber hits the road. We take all of that information, we make sure it's right, and then we translate it into a design. And we start looking at the site and how everything lays out. So next, I think I'm going to introduce Rosie. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
Next slide, please. So Rosie McGowan, Contracts and Purchasing Manager, and I'm going to talk a little bit about where we are with our hiring of our CMGC, our general contractor for this, and the process that we went through for selection. So we did issue an RFP after we came to Council and got approval for the alternative delivery method of utilizing a CMGC. We issued that on May 28th for seeking qualified firms. And we allowed about a month for responses. During that time, we answered many questions that came through. We held a mandatory pre-proposal meeting where we had great turnout. We filled the community room over at the library with folks interested in the project and learning more. And from there, when the RFP closed, we received 11 proposals. It was a very strong mix of local and regional firms, and the response really demonstrated a solid interest and the competition that we indicated would be there for this type of project. We had a selection committee that we've brought together of six members. There were four internal city team members, representation from Public Works, Police, Facilities, and City Management. And then we also had two from our consultant team from OTAC and SEA who were able to help with their expertise as well. We also had a couple participants that were non-voting members but able to participate in the process as well for their input in the selection. From there, we did evaluate the proposals, and they were weighted on several criteria from project and work management approach, quality and structure of the proposed personnel and their team organization, cost control strategies, schedule, safety, quality control, and fee was part of the criteria as well. Based on the scoring, there were five firms that we decided to interview. We invited them in for a deeper dive into some of our key areas. And we had questions around how the teams would contribute during pre-construction and design, what team collaboration and working relationships looked like, understanding of current market conditions and cost control tactics, communication strategies with city and stakeholders, all of these pieces to be able to help us make our decision. From the initial interviews, there were two firms that really stood out, so we decided to do another round as well with those two firms and brought them back in. Next slide, please. So based on the results of all of that work that our Evaluation Committee did, we were excited to announce that PNC and Pirlo, a joint venture, were selected as the CMGC contractor. And they really demonstrated strong alignment with the city priorities, their technical capability, and a collaborative approach that was important for, for the city and for this project. So now we're entering into a contract for the pre-construction phase. So this will allow our firms to all work closely together, to be able to provide input really, really on in project scope, cost estimates, and schedule. So during this, they'll focus on cost modeling and value engineering, constructability reviews, helping us understand market conditions early on by bringing them at this time. All of this is very critical to making sure that we're successful. And this contract is, we're currently finalizing the contract. We expect to have it executed within the next week or two. And this is going to be within the authority limit of the City Manager for the pre-construction services themselves, so under our $250,000 limit for those services. We will be working towards a guaranteed maximum price amendment, and this will be brought to Council, and this will be for the actual construction itself. So that process for developing that amendment and getting approval will be brought as we get closer to determining that GMP price. Yeah, our immediate step is execution. We're very excited to be, to be bringing them on board. I think now I'm passing it off to Eric for an update on the bond.
Great. Thanks, Rosie. Good evening, Council. My name is Eric King, Finance Director, and I'm here to give a finance update. If you go to the next slide, please, one more. So we're going to go into a high-level overview of the finances of the projects from inception to date thus far. So on this first chart right here, we have a green bar that has a demonstration of what the total budget is so far. That was approved at the fiscal year '26 budget. And so these are primarily for pre-construction costs for the architecture and engineering fees. One important thing to note about this chart and the budget itself is that it doesn't represent, include the land acquisition costs. But we did put a note in there to indicate that we've already made the investment of $15 million, but because that's such a large amount, at this point in time, it would really skew the chart in terms of, relative to how, how much spending has, has been spent in proportion to the budget. So as you can see, we've spent about 10% of the budget so far, just north of $500,000. And at this point, it's still early to make any projections, but we are expecting to track within budget at this point in time. Next slide, please. So this next slide is a breakout of what expenses have been spent so far. So you've heard from different groups with architecture fees, or architecture services, sorry, and also with communications. And so those are kind of the two major buckets that you're seeing there. About 80% of the costs, or about $415,000, has been spent on professional services. So that includes the project management, engineering, and architectural services. And then about 20%, or just under $100,000, has been spent on communications, which includes things like the polling and the mailers and materials for events. And then you'll see about 1% has been spent on administration, and that's, that's been for finance and legal advice. One important thing to note about this, about these percentages, that they will skew and change quite significantly over time, because right now, we're still in the design phase. And so obviously, once you get to construction, you're going to see a lot more hard costs with construction costs in there. And some of these professional services and communications will definitely go down. Additionally, right now, you might see that communication costs does make up a pretty significant portion, but again, this is still part of this early engagement phase. And so once we get down past this, I, you'll see some of those costs also taper down. Next slide, please. So this chart right here is a depiction of where we are in terms of risk management on the project from a costing perspective. So at this point in time, we're still very early in the project. So more on the left-hand side of that chart there. And so many of the project risks and unknowns still remain very high at this point in time. So what you see here is that the project contingency for the project is, is on a curve, where you'll see as we get closer to GMP, things will get down in costs, and then we will be able to actually more accurately predict where some of our soft costs will be going into the construction phase. And so as Rosie indicated earlier about the GMP, that'll come to before Council at a future time. You know, that's really at the point where we'll have much more concrete numbers in terms of where we think construction costs will land. Next slide, please. So this kind of leads me to this next chart, and where we think the project is going to cost. So based on some of the factors I mentioned on the last slide, you know, we're still at a point where there's a lot of soft costs, a lot of unknowns, and we are still projecting a high level of risk, because again, there's a lot of variables out there. And we could talk about things like tariffs. There's a lot of unknowns still. So we are estimating a range between $130 million on the low end and $150 million on the high end for the project. And these estimates really are driven based on some of the major programming needs. You know, we've kind of touched upon that earlier today for the facility, and it's kind of an early high-level estimate on where we think the costs are going to land. And as you can see, the, what's noted in the green up there, some of the soft costs that we're estimating for the projects is still quite significant, and that's really to level set the expectation that there's still a lot of variables and where we don't know where some of the costs are going to land. But again, as I highlighted in the last slide, these figures will become much more certain as we get closer to the GMP. Next slide, please. And so finally, before the bond goes to the voter, Council will need to consider certain elements and decision points for the bond package before that goes out. So these are some of the very high-level considerations that the team will provide detail at future workshop sessions. A few of the decision points I want to highlight, that Council will be asked to weigh in on, make decisions on, will be on the bond amount. So, you know, as I mentioned before, we have certain estimates, but we'll have future workshop sessions on determining that amount. This amount will also be dependent on the percentage of the project that is funded by the GEO bond. So Council could consider other avenues for funding this project. So, you know, there could be either 100% of the project funded through a GEO bond or a general obligation bond, or there could be also an option of considering a revenue bond, which would be done through utility rates. And then finally, another key decision for Council would be to make a determination on the term of the bond. So there's, there's the option right now for a 20-year versus a 30-year bond. There are pros and cons to both. Similar to like how a mortgage works, you know, if you have a 20-year bond, the biggest advantage is obviously you'll have reduced interest rate and reduced cost and interest over time initially. On the inverse side, you'd have a higher tax rate during that 20-year period, but you'll have shorter duration. And again, for the 30-year bond, it's, it's just the inverse of that. You'll have a lower tax rate, but then you'll have much more significant interest costs over that, that period of time. over that period of time. And considering that the building is going to be a long-lived asset, it is appropriate to use either of these terms as we get down to having that discussion. And then at the end of this presentation, we will, there will be some time for some Q and A, so we'd like to hear from council about any specific data requests that will help you make some of these determinations in the future. And with that, I turn it over to Chief McDonald.
Good evening, Council President, Mayor, Council, Jamie McDonald, the Police Chief. And next slide, please. I get to talk about next steps. And before we get, before we dive into next steps, what I'd like to do is I'd like to, actually, this is kind of a test for the project team. I'd like the project team to stand up so that they can all be seen who's on that. And you're welcome for the stretch, too. So as you can see, we've got a robust group of folks here. You can sit down if you'd like, or you can keep standing, that's up to you. And so we have folks from OTAC, from SEA, from PNC, Perlo, a joint venture. I promise you, we'll come up with some sort of acronym to make that easier to say. And if the police have anything to do with it, we definitely will have an acronym. But let's go to the next slide, please. So this is a timeline, or an estimated timeline of the project, and it's kind of exciting to look at. We're, obviously, they're pretty early in it. If you're in the upper-left quadrant, I guess, of that chart would tell you kind of where we're at. Really in that, the programming and leaning towards the schematic design piece, then also, as Rosie mentioned, in that CMGC pricing. So a lot of that is yet to come, right? There's a lot of work that has been done, but a lot of work left to do by the team as we move forward to this. So it's exciting to look at, but as you can see, there are several points along the way that are still going to need a lot of attention, and it's a pretty aggressive timeline, but I'm promised by our professionals that do this for a living that we can stay on that timeline that's there. Next slide, please. So here's a little bit more about when you'll be hearing back from the project team as we move forward. You'll be hearing about these different benchmarks, project update again in December, and I think what you'll hear then is a much better idea of what will be included in the facility in terms of the design piece of it. That's where we'll have a better idea of the types of things that will be a part of that. And then obviously, January, February will be that conversation that council will need to have on landing what that bond package will actually look like that the voters would be asked to consider. And then again, another project update in April, which will have a much more informed sense of information about what the project will look like when the groundbreaking occurs, which could be within a year potentially, is what we would be looking at. Next slide, please. And this is where we give all of you an opportunity to ask any of us that are here tonight questions about what you've heard or seen, or anything else you'd like to be informed on the project about.
Okay. Chief, thank you so much. Very exciting information, and welcome to those that are new. Excited to have you as part of the team. I want to be mindful of the time and yet honor questions that council has. So with that, Councilor Shaw and Robbins are going to start with the two of you, and then shift to Councilor Gadducey. So Councilor Robbins, do you have questions?
Thank you. No specific questions right now. I will say that Finance Director Kang, I am going to definitely need some classes from you on what the different bonds are and the pros and cons of each, so I look forward to having that information. I think this is a really, really exciting project. Again, the financial pressures that all of us and all the residents are under does put extra stress on us all to make sure that this bond moves through, so that we can continue with this project. So I guess as much as we can to all participate and get out there and talk to people about the bond and let them know that Police and Public Works is not in good condition and is not big enough so that we can make sure that people vote positively for the bond. I think this is very exciting.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Shaw.
Thank you. I think it was an excellent presentation. Thank you to all those, including Assistant Manager Trich, who put this together. It was very thorough. I don't have additional questions. I think it's early in the process, very supportive of the process, and the need for the Public Works and Police as our community has grown. So we'll pass it on in the interest of time, but again, thank you very much for all those in the room and the presentation you put together.
Very good. Councilor Gadducey.
Chief and Director Rayker, what are you guys most excited about with the proposed design? In order to get people excited about the bond measure.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and go first. The prospect of having enough space to operate effectively and efficiently is what excites me the most.
Very similar. Police, their need is largely building. Public Works, largely the yard area. So that's why I'm invested in this joint venture between Police and Public Works, so that, just having that yard space so that we can safely get our equipment, move it around, park it, that'll be fantastic.
Thank you all for an excellent presentation. It was very, very well-paced, if I may say, and very informative. And I am very much looking forward to the future workshop meetings where the council will deliberate on what the actual bond package will look like, because it's really important considering all the sort of external factors right now, that we get that dollar amount in cost to residents and businesses correct, while also being mindful of interest payments and so on to the overall community. One clarifying question. I recall, I probably misremembered this, I recall there being some sort of community advisory body in the run-up to the bond measure, or maybe certainly after the bond measure as part of an oversight. Did I misremember that?
Not at all, and you're right on both counts. So I briefly mentioned that we are starting recruitment for the community advisory panel starting next month, and hoping to also be talking about that at Family Fun Day through October. The way we originally brought that idea to council included a council liaison, so we'll be back to this body to also ask for a liaison to help with that. And so that will be in the run-up to the bond. And then after the bond, there will also be a bond. I'm going to get the terminology wrong, but the folks who will make sure the bond dollars are spent correctly and will have oversight over that process, so there will be two different groups. But one more on the communications side, one on the finance and oversight side.
Perfect. So ditto to everything that was said, and the only thing that I'd like to add, as I think council members have been out chatting with community members about the need about space, yard, facilities, et cetera. What I'm eager to hear and learn more about, and I'll look to Scott Edwards for this, is as we see the pictures, we can visually see the challenges, but how do you turn that into a conversation that creates impact for our city and provides value to our community members? And to just really be able to tell those stories, why those pictures have such an impact on your daily work, but how it adds value to our community. So I hope that's part of our conversation the next round. And that's all I'll add, and just really excited to have you all here. Thanks. You, Councilor.
I don't have any questions or anything. I just want to say that this is a really exciting project, and I'm so excited to watch it happen.
Thank you, and this is an exciting project, yeah. And I think this is one way to treat our employees well, right? Our Sheriff Messy mentioned that if we treat our city employee well, they will do their job well, in turn, we'll be treated well. So this is very exciting, and I'm really excited about it. Just two quick questions. One is about the GMC contract coming before council. When do you expect that?
I'll come join you. Clears the room. The timing's still being determined, but as we continue to get further along within our design documents and be able to develop what the guaranteed maximum price is, that's what we'll be bringing to you. I'm not sure if there's a better specific timeline on that, but if there's amendments that we need before then, they would come, but that's the main one that we're looking at that will be coming for you.
Thank you for the question. We're targeting December or early January, and so the further along we get, the more refined the cost will get. So just a couple slides over in that, the look ahead. We'll be coming to you with that, as well as any other amendments as needed.
Okay. And one quick question about, so this is a joint venture between PNC and Perlo. Can you just give me a very one-minute summary of how they complement each other? Because it's unusual for two, to me at least, to have two teams to a one job, so how do those two companies complement each other?
Hi. Well, my name's Brian Schumaker, and I'm the President of PNC Construction. With me today is Todd Dewey. He's the Vice President of Perlo Construction. Our two companies have had a chemistry together for decades. It goes back multiple generations of ownership. We approached each other some time ago when we were both tracking this particular project. Perlo, local subcontractor, brings with them large project experience, large site experience. PNC brings with us CMGC experience, Public Works facility experience, and Police facility experience. And when we started having that conversation, we felt that we were better together, and so we decided to do the joint venture because we felt that it was a win for Tiger. And so that's how the two companies came together to pursue this project.
Well said. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
That's a great question, Councilor. Thank you for that. And Mayor Lub.
Oh, thank you for the presentation. That was very thorough and appreciate all the information, and as we continue to work forward, still lots of work to do.
Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, very exciting. Look forward to seeing you all again, I'm sure, soon. Thank you. Okay, next item is our Economic Development Strategic Plan. I want to welcome Community Director Kirkman and Economic Development Manager. It is time to go home. Hothar, thank you.
So Council President, if I could weigh in really quickly, just to manage time, we have three items left. We anticipate the presentation on this one will be about 10 minutes, then plus any feedback from the council, then we have the other two council items after that. The presentations for those are about five minutes total in just council discussion. I just want to manage that since we're beyond our estimated time at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Okay, please go ahead.
Good evening. Danell Hothar, Economic Development Manager for the City of Tigard.
And Sambo Kirkman, Community Development Director.
I do want to compliment all of our teammates for the previous presentation. I believe that was one of the most well-choreographed presentations of multiple presenters I've ever seen, and I've been doing this a while, so. We will also be well-choreographed as it's just us. We wanted to bring to you a conversation about the Economic Development Strategic Plan, which is a topic that we have had various conversations with at various opportunities at council, but we haven't actually had a directive or decision to move forward and said, you know, it is time to put all of these ideas into a plan and really take a moment to analyze what we've been doing, what we need to be doing, and how we can, as a department, can best support council goal for economic development. Next slide. So our purpose is to understand council's desire for involvement in the work to develop the City of Tigard's first Economic Development Strategic Plan. Next slide. Our project goal here is to create a very clear roadmap with that guidance in how we are determining the investment made by the city towards economic development throughout the city, through our programming, as well as through who we are investing in partners and what we are prioritizing, and making sure that we can meet the needs of all of our Tigard residents and businesses, from solopreneurs all the way to our very well-established cornerstone industries. And of course, to support economic development, our council's goal for creating economic opportunity for all. Next slide. Very typical strategic plan development here. We're going to look at where we are, identify our mission, vision, values, our objectives, metrics, and then deliver the strategic plan. Next slide. So our first task in this opportunity is to do the environmental scan, the asset mapping. We're going to do this through a combination of desk research and targeted outreach. Our desk research includes that inventory of what our existing economic development programs are, who our partners are, where those programs are succeeding, and where our opportunities for improvements are in those spaces. And then we're also going to take a high-level look at Tigard's economic and demographic profiles, what the employment trends are, employment challenges, and we'll also take a look at our commercial real estate market, because as we know, that influences what opportunities we can even go for in Tigard. We're landlocked, we are stuck with what we have on inventory, and we don't want to create an economic development strategy that isn't even attainable based on what resources we have available to us. Our targeted outreach, then, is looking to engage with businesses to understand what their needs are and really where our gaps in services are. And when we talk about gaps in services, we're not talking about city-provided services only, we're talking about where our partners are and where other economic development delivery opportunities come through. When we talk about Tigard-Tualton School District, PCC, we talk about SBDC, we talk about all of our partners that deliver various components of economic development, assistance, guidance, resources, et cetera. This targeted outreach will look like surveys to all businesses that hold a valid Tigard business license, because we recognize and prioritize understanding a variety of perspectives from a solopreneur all the way to our cornerstone industries, and making sure that we have a wide representation of what those gaps and needs are in our services. We'll also look to do complete three focus groups and up to 10 targeted interviews with key stakeholders. This will make sure that we have the representation from all of our business interests. It's also important here that we have the inclusion of our partners in these areas, so when we're talking about others that develop or deliver economic development programming or initiatives, like our Chamber of Commerce, Business Oregon, Westside Economic Alliance, Greater Portland, Inc., as previously mentioned, Tigard-Tualton School District, and those that provide workforce development, education, training, et cetera. Next slide. Second task is then identifying mission, vision, and values. And really what we're looking to do is identify what we are trying to achieve. By our mission, we say, why does this work matter? Vision is what long-term change looks like, and then our values, really identifying what principles should guide decision-making as we move forward over the next couple of years. Next slide. Next up is going to be the identification of strategic objectives, actions, and metrics. We'll include a workshop in this space to identify the objectives and focus areas, and really look to convert those mission, vision, values into action items and meaningful implementation targets moving forward. What we're looking for in this space is that we really want a clear understanding of how we're going to measure and evaluate impact, and looking to identify what our guidelines to inform change and improvement in programming and partnership development will look like. We also want to identify, we want clear identification of who our partners are and what those investments need to look like in our partners. Who else is doing this work? How to leverage expertise and resources to maximize services, and clear understanding of what programs and services we need to provide and what programs and services we need to connect our patrons to. Next slide. And the final outcome is the strategic plan itself. What we're looking for in the development of the strategic plan is really to gain the support of internal alignment, budget planning, creating that shared decision-making and priorities, and making sure that we're actually meeting the unmet needs of our business community. Next slide. Timeline, looking to talk to you in August, snuck in right at the end here. September and October, we're looking to complete that environmental scan and that Task One, making sure that we- Timeline, looking to talk to you in August, snuck in right at the end here. September and October, we're looking to complete that environmental scan and that Task One, making sure that we have an understanding of what's out there, what we need to be doing. By November, we'll look to conduct the workshops to work through identification of mission, vision, and values. Late November, change that into development of the strategic objectives, actions, and metrics. Looking to have a draft strategic plan available for council review by December and adoption of the final plan by January so that we can use this strategic plan to inform budget process for the next fiscal year. Next slide. And our ask to you this evening is, how would council like to engage in the process? At what points? Are we talking everybody? Are we talking liaisons? What would you like to do? As this is a council goal, we want to make sure that your needs and interests are being represented and supported as we move through this process as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the succinct presentation. Counselor Hu, questions, comments?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Excellent. Please, Counselor.
I just, I think a liaison would be best from what I understand, at least.
Okay. So I will just chime in. I do think there would likely be interest from at least one counselor to have a liaison in a role for that. So I think that's great. And I think for me, I guess what I was thinking, looking at the timeline, I just want to make sure whether that's through City Manager Stockwell's updates, that there's checkpoints. Because I will be really curious, what does your asset mapping tell you? What is capacity versus what needs to be rejuvenated? Who have you talked to? Because I think there's a ton of businesses in Tigard, and you both know them well, that likely participate or maybe don't. So how do we really understand all aspects? So I'm really curious about those pieces. But I don't want to wait until the end of December when almost everything is put together and we get an update. So that's my biggest thing, is just communication along the way. And however that is most effective, I'm fine with that. But just want those touchpoints. So thank you. Counselor Shaw.
Thank you. I agree. Support the idea of having at least one liaison. I know I'm personally very interested in being regularly updated and/or involved as part of this policymaking process. And I appreciate you putting that through line to the fiscal year '27 budgets. That way, we can make sure that within this two-year council period, we are actually enacting and funding the proposals that come forward. So thank you.
And I'll echo what the other counselors have said. We really do need a council liaison. The last thing I want is for you to come through, do all of this, come back in December, and not be like, ah. That said, I do think that it's important at some point to come up with a strategic vision together to at least get you started instead of just going in blind. So although I do think that we should have a council liaison, I think at one point, we should all have that sort of discussion of what we want the economic future of Tigard to look like.
So maybe there's a work session along the way or something as you collect more data. Thank you. Counselor Shaw.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation. Two questions. One, would a regional assessment also be included? Because I think it would be important to see what other cities are doing, and maybe we don't necessarily want to replicate. And then the second is, what is the horizon? Because economic development strategic plans can look 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. So you're really building momentum upon a foundation. And so it's not just a two- or three-year. And then I guess if there's more comment, I'm consistently surprised that the City of Tigard has never had an economic development plan. But if you could answer the first two questions, I'd appreciate that. And then I also support my fellow counselors' request for updates and work session.
Absolutely. Thank you for the questions. The horizon here that we're talking about is a three-year plan. And this is a very specific timeline in that we are currently experiencing economic conditions that would have completely invalidated a much longer plan. We also know that while we are very independent here in the City of Tigard, we are influenced by national-level politics and international-level business decisions. So more than a three-year plan does not make sense for looking out. And we don't want to do a one- or two-year plan because we do want to be more forward-looking in where those strategic investments go. What we anticipate will come out of this, though, is the foundation to look at renewal and revalidation of the plan every couple of years instead of starting completely over and being able to have a more iterative process that can stay relevant and flexible and responsive to economic conditions as they change. We see indicators now that we won't even actually feel for years to come. And we know that the economic cycle is significantly longer than what's happening right now. And we want to make sure that we're ready for that. So it's not, it has variable components in the intention of the timeline, but what we're calling it is a three-year plan. And then remind me what your first question was.
With regards to regional assessment.
We already have on board our regional partners, specifically Washington County, Business Oregon, and a couple of our other city partners. We work closely with the economic development managers of City of Sherwood and City of Beaverton, making sure that we are all in alignment. And then also, we share partners and resources. So a lot of, a lot of when we identify resources who also deliver programming, they're not delivering programming based on municipal jurisdictional boundaries. They're delivering programming based on larger boundaries. We also have Metro on board as a partner in helping to inform this. So we are looking regionally as well to make sure that we have access to and we can identify regional resources, as well as understand regional trends and what potential regional gaps are. And then service delivery, making sure that we don't limit ourselves to any of those providers who are just operating or based out of Tigard.
Thank you. And I know there's probably a couple other counselors interested in liaison, and I would certainly be interested. I'm not sure I'd call kind of a three-year plan Economic Development Strategic Plan, but look forward to further discussions. Thank you.
Sambo, did you want to add something?
Oh, I was just going to point out that part of the strategic plan project team includes Echo Northwest and their experience with other strategic plans that they've brought along. As Counselor Shaw has mentioned, we are kind of new in the strategic plan development right now.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Robbins?
Thank you. I think this is very interesting, and I look forward to learning more. I think we've, as a council, asked a lot of really good questions, and I just look forward to learning more. Thank you.
Mayor Lube, please round this out.
Thank you. I think given the broad interest that, because it is kind of a new council goal and something that everyone is invested in, having more touchpoints and work sessions is probably better than having a liaison or just some continual updates in the city manager's reports and then touchpoints in work sessions, shorter ones, is probably the way to go because it is so new, and then we can give feedback along the way. That would only be my feedback. Thank you.
So the only clarifying point, because I think I heard mixed levels of liaison interest or touchpoints, and I'm kind of thinking I'm good with both. But I don't know if we have to do a vote or take, I'm just not clear since we had different directions there on the liaison. How do we move forward with that?
If I may, can I make a recommendation, and then you guys could possibly vote on that?
Let's see how it goes forward.
Depends on my recommendation, right? Based on what I understood is there's interest, as you mentioned, Council President, there's interest in having active involvement, but also widespread involvement. And what, based on that, what recommendation might be to assign a liaison or to be part of the core team working through? But then also, we can hold a workshop at that mid-between Task Two and Three point in after we have had time to work through the business community input. We've worked through our desk research. We've worked through the preliminary mission, vision, values, statements. And then we've come to bring a workshop to council to say, okay, here's what we've heard from the community. Now, how do you want to shape this moving into the next step of that targeted goal development? And what do you see as your priority? So almost adding a mid-step in there and providing a workshop for council at that point.
So I guess it is a council goal. So I want to honor how important this is to all of us. And I appreciate that. I think that's, you know, Mayor Lube's point on that. I just, almost again, going back to City Manager Stockwell's, you know, communications about the work. I just want to make sure that we get, as you're doing this work along the way, that we get those updates and not have completed it. And then this is what we did, that we're moving forward. So I, and I don't mean to stick here. I just want to make sure we have clear direction for you. So to Mayor Lube's point, she was just steps along the way. Do we, or do we feel like the liaisons, we'd like a couple engaged along the way? So thank you.
Council President, so I support the idea of a hybrid approach, mainly because I would imagine that those two core liaison folks can provide sort of a general temperature for the council on some of the more smaller-level decisions that may not be efficient to have, to canvas regularly with the full council. But we can still provide regular touchpoints, maybe at our workshop meetings or at whatever cadence really the council wants. That way, we can make sure at a high level, we're all moving in the same direction that we want to go. But I think separating out, so that way there are one or two main points of contact will be much more efficient in terms of actually developing this and developing proposals that are more likely to be supported by the entire council.
And I do want to just highlight in all of this, too. We are on a pretty accelerated timeline and a very aggressive timeline, ensuring that we can have this delivery in time to influence the next budget cycle.
So Counselor Shaw, I see your hand. So my, one comment about that, then, maybe having what that liaison responsibility, expectations written up. So then if someone wanted to commit, they would know what they're committing to. Would be great. And Counselor Shaw?
Yeah, I was going to recommend, I also suggest that I support the hybrid approach and two liaisons. And I think having a little bit of a guideline of what that looks like would be helpful as well. Council President Wolf, to support your recommendation. And because it is an accelerated timeline, I think it's going to be key to have those liaisons. Thank you.
Mayor Lube, anything you'd like to add?
No, I just, I want to make sure there's been a history of, or past of getting all the way down, saying this is what, I just want to make sure there's those touch and checkpoints with the whole council. So however we get them is fine with me.
Thank you, Mayor, and I 100% support that. And I think, yeah, there was nods from the city manager, too. So, okay, I think with that, are we ready to move forward? And yay, this is exciting.
Thank you very much. I understand our takeaways are to provide guidance for what a council liaison responsibilities would be, expecting council to give us two liaisons, and then we'll include the touchpoints in the updated schedule. Thank you.
Definitely along the way. We're all very excited.
What we can do is provide, just because of the expedite timelines, we'll provide a memo following this up through the city manager, and we'll just look forward to communications through the city manager as to who the liaisons will be.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay. All right. So moving forward, we will now go to the City Officer Review Schedule, which is City Manager's stock.
All right. Thank you. This may clear out the rest of the room, but that's okay because this is a discussion amongst us. So I'll actually do both presentations together, just for efficiency, and you can give feedback. So what we're looking for tonight is clarification of the review schedule for the city officers. That's the city attorney, city judge, and city manager versus other employees. And direction to the city manager to include this schedule in the, as a standing item on the end of the tentative agenda. And then also to review the proposed questionnaire for city officer evaluations and provide any feedback. So just some quick comments on that. The requirement to annually review the performance of each city officer is contained within the employment agreements approved by the council and the officer. The language from each agreement I did include in your packet, the, for each one of them, it refers to either, it refers to their anniversary date in both the attorney and the judge. And then the city manager one has June, which is also the anniversary date for the city manager. For the citywide personnel policy, it hasn't been updated since 2019. It is currently being updated, and we're having our class and comp study consultant looked at that. In fact, they've already looked at that. And it is likely that that will change from an annual, where all of them are done in June, to the employee's merit eligibility date or their anniversary date. We, so you could continue, you can continue to do them as per the employment agreements, which is on the anniversary dates. These can be changed on mutual consent, both the council and the city officers. And I'll also mention, because this was mentioned to me in the background, if there are specific circumstance, like there's a significant turnover on the council, and there's a bunch of new members, and you haven't had sufficient time to review a officer's performance at that time, then we could handle that as a special circumstance and between the council and the city officer, you know, make an adjustment. And to my understanding, that's exactly what's happened in the past when we've had that kind of circumstance. So that's the information on the first item, on the review, the proposed questionnaire. We've provided to you the questionnaires that were used for the most recent, template of the questionnaires that were used for the most recent evaluation. And then, I apologize, but earlier this afternoon, it was brought to my attention that there were also 360-degree formats that were used in 2024. And so I hit forward those as well. I don't think there's any objection to doing self-evaluations, 360s, and council evaluations. We just want to make sure they're all synced up. So whatever direction you provide tonight, we'll work to make sure those are all synced up and communicated to everyone. And I did talk to the judge in advance of the meeting, and I know she's, you know, watching and listening as well. So thank you.
Okay. So Mayor, actually, as I've been deferring to you to the end, I'm actually going to check in with you to kind of kick us off on how you'd like to start this conversation.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I think this is an important conversation. It's been, I think, unintentionally, kind of all over the map as far as dates and timelines and those sorts of things. And we had previously discussed as a council after the last review where we did have a lot of turnover, and it became difficult for new members to do an evaluation, to talk about doing specifically the city manager and city attorney. And I understand we want the judge to be on the same timeline, to do that evaluation at the end of the calendar year to make sure that the council that worked with them was able to do that evaluation before, every two years, council has the opportunity to turn over. That would be my recommendation because of that. I understand, you know, the want or desire or the comfortability of anniversary date. I just think this is a weird, special circumstance because of the way that council manages these three employees and to make sure that they're getting the best feedback for the council that has the expectations and works with them. So that's my recommendation. And, you know, that's what we talked about as a council, I think, year and a half ago? I can't remember, I think is what it was. But if this council decides differently, then that's what this council decides. But I think it's an important conversation.
Thank you, Mayor. With that, I'm going to stick to the screen. Counselor Shaw.
Thank you, Council President Wolf, and thank you, Mayor. I would like to go with industry standard and have the evaluations on the anniversary of their hire date. We may, in the past, have discussed that counselors may not have had enough time. But if you're elected in November, you're starting in January. That review in December, you're missing anyway. And I know we've given special allotment for, in the past, for a couple even to sit in on some of those evaluations. But it's not industry standard. I don't think we should try and develop a whole new process. And so I would recommend we go with their anniversary date. We're very, most counselors are very good about asking questions, very good about getting some information. And I think the 360s, the self-evaluation, and the peer evaluations will be enough for counselors to move forward with the recommendation. So that would, that would be my recommendation is move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shaw. Counselor Robbins?
Thank you. I do have a question. Is it actually, and maybe I missed this with what City Manager Stockwell said, is it industry standard to do reviews on the anniversary date? Because that is not my experience working in either one of my large corporate settings where I've worked. So is that something specific to city management, that it's industry standard, city manager or Stockwell? Do you know?
I have seen it both ways. And, but I will say that it's, yeah, I've seen it both ways. You know, it's really a council preference. So I do understand that a lot of business industry in particular does do it that way. So, thank you. It's hard when you get put on the spot like that, but thank you. I appreciate it. I hope that was helpful.
Part of that, so you're saying, so are you saying that in your experience, you think that large business industry reviews executives on their anniversary date?
Counselor Robbins, could you repeat that question? I just want to make sure I respond to it accurately.
I thought you said that that was industry standard. So are you saying that in your experience, businesses, large industry, reviews executives on their anniversary date?
Counselor Robbins, I'll have to defer. I am not familiar with what businesses do. I can say, in the local governments I've worked in, I have seen it done both ways, where everybody's reviewed on one day, you know, one time, which is really burdensome for that perspective. But the good thing is, is you're comparing everybody at the same time. I've also seen organizations that do it based on the anniversary date, and that's often much easier to handle because you're kind of spreading them out throughout the year.
Okay.
This city is in the middle of making the change.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just thought I heard you say that, and I wanted to clarify. So I apologize if I confuse things more. So in my experience, everyone in past things and at the hospital where I work now, reviews are all done at a specific time. It's just kind of review season, and that's where we do things. I think it's easier to pick a specific time and move forward using that time. Whereas if we use anniversary dates, it's going to be, it's going to be kind of throughout the year for the various anniversaries for the various people. Then if somebody leaves, and we get somebody new, it's going to change that time. Again, that to me seems cumbersome, but I, it's not a hill I want to die on, so I will, you know, go with the majority. But I would vote that we pick a time, whether it's the end of the year or October, whenever everyone else is getting reviewed in the city seems like a very reasonable time.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Gudusi.
Thank you, Council President. I do see the pros and cons of both. It's going to be a long, long day, having to review everybody all together versus doing it in a rolling manner. In the end, I do feel that it most impacts the employees. So would it be possible to get their perspective and see if they have a preference? Because if, you know, that's what I think we should do.
Say you two go for it.
Thank you for asking. So my preference would be anniversary date. The other consideration is that anniversary date is tied to merit. Those are the same. So I think it makes sense to keep those tied together. Would be my preference.
City Manager Stockwell?
Doesn't matter to me. I can do it either way. I serve at your pleasure. I'll be evaluated whenever you want to do it. Thank you.
Is the judge on the line?
I don't see her on the line. She was going to watch the meeting, so she was aware of what the decision's made. If I hear from her, I will let you know.
Thank you. Counselor Slack?
Thank you, Council President Wolf. I'd also like to thank City Manager Stockwell for promptly scheduling this topic, since I was the one that had requested it through our non-agenda item process. So thank you so much for finding the time to do it, and I apologize to my colleagues for turning this into a slightly longer evening than anticipated by having these two additional items. But I think it's important to clarify this, so that way we have clear expectations, roles, and responsibilities for the seven council members and the three city officers. My preference would be to go with option A, continuing with the current process, and to direct the city manager to schedule annual evaluations in the month of the anniversary date, just to make it clear and simple for everyone. That is, the city attorney's annual review would be held in October, the city manager's annual review would be held in June, and the judge's annual review would be held in March. Just that way, it's clear and so on. I hear the perspectives on both sides, but I think City Attorney Rahala brings up the point that I was going to bring up, which is the annual review is tied to merit adjustments, which we just approved a whole policy on. So if we were to start changing it to arbitrary dates based on the council's preference, then we would have to look at that entire policy changing, which I don't think is necessarily something that the council wants to do. And speaking from personal experience, I've also, you know, worked in industry. I own business. I don't know what to say there. I have a corporate life outside of this. And I've been part of corporate reorgs, where I got a new manager six weeks before my annual review, and it didn't matter. We had my annual review when it was scheduled according to company policy, because that's when it was scheduled to be. So while I respect that some colleagues may want to delay having annual reviews, so that way certain counselors can have more experience working with that individual. I haven't had that experience in my career. And also, I don't think that that practice has been consistently applied during my time on the council, considering the few reviews that I've been part of, where I've not served for a full year, save for the city attorney's review. I know Counselor Robbins and Gudusi haven't served for a full year when we just held the judge's review. So I just, I don't personally buy that argument, but I understand where it's coming from. So option A with annual reviews in the month of the anniversary date of the city officer, and adding that to the tentative agenda, so we can clear it all up forever.
Counselor Gudusi, I realize that I continued on, but you didn't give a direction after you asked the question.
I would go with the preference of the city attorney.
Okay. Thank you. So as for me, you know, some things have changed. As one of those counselors, three of us, that would have made up a majority of the council at the time, coming in on January with little structure in place to make those opinions to the chief executive officer, I found as a tremendous challenge. And so I think, I appreciated having them at the end of the year. There's a couple of things that I have thought about more recently is 360s are really very essential into our assessment and evaluation of both these senior officers, and to ask staff or to do two of those together at the same time. I want to manage that expectation of their time. So where I was leaning towards, I liked the end of the year because it aligned with council. I think we have some better structures. I wish future councils the best if they have a January anniversary date, because I think those are a challenge, but I'm fine with anniversary dates, and that's been a shift in my thinking, as I feel like the structure and the preference seems to be there. And I also think industry standards vary, right? I've used anniversary date, and I've certainly used this as review from employee A to the very top. So I think they do vary. But with that, Youth Counselor, what's your thoughts?
I obviously have no experience with this, because I'm not, not really in the corporate world yet. But just from all the information I'm getting, it sounds like anniversaries would be better. And I feel like I've been here for almost three months, and I feel like I understand the sentiment of maybe it can be hard to do a review after such a short amount of time. But after being here such a short amount of time, I feel like especially someone with more experience would be able to be capable of doing a review if it was based off of, even if it was based off of anniversary. So.
Counselor Who?
I think the majority of council have made a decision, so I don't have to say anything. So, thank you.
So is, so we leave as the contract state, which is the anniversary date, there's no action required with that, correct? So, okay. I mean, and I do appreciate all the work that has been done over the past several months or years to try to create a structure. That is something that is thoughtful and moves this work forward in instructive evaluation processes. So, okay, so I guess, any additional questions? Do I see hands up? You look like you want to speak.
And just to clarify, I don't know if the city manager was going to ask this as well, as far as the actual timing to ensure that we're aligned with the contracts. Are there any objections to scheduling them regularly in the month of the anniversary date of the city officer? That is, we would have the annual review for the judge in March, the city manager's review would be in June, and the city attorney's review would be in October, just regularly on the tentative agenda as an item that will be scheduled and during those months. I want to just be clear about, even though we were clear with option A, that doesn't fully nail down what the actual expectation is going forward, at least for two of those contracts.
Mayor Lube, do you have questions, comments on Counselor Slack's request?
No. City Manager Stockwell and I have been working on sort of, you know, the tentative agenda has just sort of been three months that's sent out, but we're working on a general calendar so we know automatically throughout the year, year over year, what happens. So there shouldn't be any issue putting those on.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I think, nope, Counselor Slack, go for it.
I just wanted to make sure we return to the second item, if that's what, the second portion of the questionnaires.
Yes, and I was transitioning to that, Counselor. Thank you.
I'm so sorry.
Getting a little punchy. So, City Manager Stockwell, would you like to kick us off? Or we just go for it on the evaluations? Okay, we're going to go for it. So I think our purpose, and again, I'm going to shift to Mayor Lube, since the room is fairly empty, to kick us off in her thoughts on the documents, which include kind of that four-question structure as well as our 360 that was used in prior evaluations. Thank you, Mayor Lube.
Yeah, no, I think the 360 is incredibly important if we want to also develop that for the judge. I think, you know, each role perhaps has a few specific questions that are tailored, and we can work on that. But I like the sort of basic self-assessment form and those sorts of things. Yeah, so just looking forward to the conversation.
Thank you, Mayor Lube. Counselor Who?
Yeah, no question, no issue with any of the form. Just one little thing, the self-assessment form, the second dot, the third dot says, how can we help you achieve your goals? I would recommend we change it to how can the council help you achieve your goal, because the "we" is very ambiguous. So.
Okay. Youth Counselor?
I think it's good. I don't really have anything to add.
Thank you. Okay, so me. So my question, I guess, I want to understand, like, the four questions, I think they're great on the check-in, so we have a structure to our conversations. I think that's really important. I guess my question is, are we using both the four and then the reflection and the 360? In the past, the 360 has also been the tool for self-reflection, right? How do you measure yourself against these? So are we doing both in the annual review or using one for the six months and one for the annual, or we do both? I'm just trying to get really clear and crisp about when we're using what tools. I, well, yeah, it's you guys. It's no offense. But I would love to hear your opinion.
Well, I was going to defer back to her, so we're on the same page. Thanks.
Okay. Please, go ahead, City Attorney.
So I totally agree, the 360 is very valuable for me as well. So in the past, the process has been that the longer form, the same as the 360, has been for the yearly, the self-eval, the council eval, and the 360 eval. Everybody has used that same form. I think it gives good consistency to council in answering the questions, but I'm not particularly, I have no strong feelings about that. But I do think having that form for the yearly makes more sense, and then the mid-year check-in is the shorter, more streamlined version that doesn't include the rest of the components.
And then I think the only addition would be, then what are those kind of goals that need, you know, so that kind of future-looking needs to be added. But that's kind of the only piece that I was thinking. Okay. Counselor Slack?
Thank you. Yeah, no, I, if I heard that correctly, I would agree with ensuring that the three, I think it's important to have the three, but I would set the 360 evaluation at the same time as the annual review, and just streamline it that way, as opposed to having a third event floating around out there.
I don't think that was the idea. I think my, what I was trying to say is the 360 is the tool for the annual.
Okay.
So.
I mean, so my concern, I think it's important to have in addition to the annual, but at the end of the day, the council will need to sign off on an annual performance review, which is then, per our policy, handed off to the HR director in order to facilitate the compensation adjustment based on that review. We need some, some document ultimately, I feel like, where it's saying this is the council's, this is the council's review of this individual, and this is what sort of the annual record is. That would be my interpretation of what we would need to do here. Not having the annual review just be, consist of a 360 survey that we then discuss, which is what I'm, again, it's 9:34 right now, so maybe I'm just getting confused, but my expectation would be self-review, and then the council has an annual review, the 360 is done at the same time as the annual review, so that way we, the council can consider that. The council then authorizes what the annual review is jointly, it gets signed off on, and then gets handed off as part of the policy that we agreed upon earlier this year. That would be my expectation of how this should work at the, on the anniversary dates for our city officers.
So I guess I'm going to say what I was thinking, and then anyone can add or correct me. So I guess in my mind, the 360 is completed by the employee, by counselors, by all those identified as participants in the 360. That data is collected. We review it from all that data. We create a summary evaluation. That is basically the executive summary, if you will, of what was learned from the evaluation. So, or the 360 assessment, I'm sorry. So there's three buckets of participants in the 360. That data is reviewed by all of us. From that is a summary evaluation. That would be the reflection of all that data collection, if that makes sense. Apparently it doesn't. So.
No.
Yeah, that's correct. So the form that was sent out to you today, that is the, that's been called the 360, but that is the template form that has been used in the past for the city manager and city attorney. So that form is sent to everyone as part of the 360, to the employee for the self-eval, and to council. Absolutely correct. In the past, the way it has worked is that the self-eval and the 360 is all sent to city council in advance of that executive session review. Council then looks at that, maybe draws pieces from it, assembles their own thoughts, and then that document is the council document. So at the end of a process, the employee has the self-eval, all the 360s, and the council form, and it's all comprised of the total yearly evaluation.
And then Director, the Director of Human Resources would be that facilitator and kind of that assistant in compiling that into a summary review?
Correct, yes.
Yes, I agree with that. I apologize if that's not how I, I thought I had tried communicating it that way. That was, but it's all good. So, yeah, I fully support that process as stated by the city attorney. That makes total sense to me. And then the only other thing I wanted to note, as far as the official sign-off on the council form, we have, as part of the policy, the council needs to sign off on the annual review within 14 days of that review being conducted. And I think just based on sort of our. just based on sort of our first attempt at this, it would be good to broaden out the signing authority on that review, because it may be possible that the mayor and/or the council president, who we would normally defer to, may not be available to sign off on that within that period. So, I think it would be just good practice for the council to delegate the signing authority to one or two individuals. Could be the mayor and council president, or it could be two counselors, however we want to decide on it, just to ensure that it's really clear who is going to review the summary document before and authorize it as the official version before we proceed. That would be my preference, and I mention that just because the form says mayor's signature on there, and that was an issue that we ran into with our most recent review process.
So, again, this is a collaborative conversation. So, council, all counselors and the mayor will have access to that summary document and review it. And then I still support that the mayor signs off on that on behalf of the council, and I think that having some clear, and I'll call myself, enable me, subject line, do X, please review and sign off. Sometimes even those helpful things in a very full inbox can help expedite getting things turned around. So, that's my two cents on who should sign off, recognizing every counselor has the responsibility to review a summarized document and show that that reflected accurately the evaluation discussion. But I'm, I would like to open that up, and then Mayor Lou, please feel free to chime in at any point. But counselors, do you want to change the document on who signs off? That's the question. I think that Counselor Schlag is putting it in front of us. Yes, Counselor Gadduci?
Given that council president can often act on behalf of the mayor, whenever the mayor is absent, does it actually need to be changed, or can that just be done? So, if in the future the mayor is unable to do so in two weeks, would the council president be able to act on their behalf?
So, the charter actually sets specific instances in which the council president takes over for the mayor. So, if it was just meant to be a broad option, I would suggest it just say council signature and not list a title, and then-
Okay.
It can be the mayor or whoever else. That would be the simplest way, would be my suggestion.
With the expectation it would be the mayor, but if a circumstance would arise, there's flexibility.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other thoughts from counselors? Oh, Counselor Shaw?
Say I support that.
Yeah, and I was going to mention the charter as well, and that it made sense to open it to counselors, because that way we have maximum flexibility in this collaborative process. So, City Attorney Rahala mentioned exactly what I was going to mention, so thank you.
Mayor Lou?
That's fine, whatever the council wants.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to recap, just so we all think we heard the same thing or agreeing to the same thing. So, I think we have two different documents. Council will continue with the shorter kind of four questions as a six-month check-in tool, so we have some kind of structure that we're following for that. For the annual review, which is now by anniversary date, counselor or council self, the employee, and those designated to be in the 360, will complete this evaluation tool. Council will meet, will review all that data, create a summary of the feedback received with the assistance of the Human Resources Director, and then that will become kind of the final annual review of which all counselors will approve of, and then it will be signed off as designated by whichever council member, and those identified on the form. Does that all make sense? Questions, comments? Yes, Counselor Schlag?
Keep pressing it, yeah. Fully agree with the proposal or the summation, as you summed it up. Council President Wolf, I would just like to clarify, since we only have 360 documents currently for the city attorney and city manager, that this process would apply to all city officers, and therefore we would need to develop the 360 survey tool or evaluation tool for the municipal judge, and just wanted to put that on the record, that that would be the expectation.
Thank you. Counselor Schlag, and I guess my question or request then would be to work with Director Gomez on what would that look like? Because the judge is going to be, just as the two of you are unique, so would that be for the judge, and what kind of appropriate questions, and who would be the participants in the 360 that makes sense? So, I don't know if that has to circle back to us, or we leave that to the discretion of the director. Mayor, do you have any comments on the judge's 360?
No, I think we just need to go through and see if there's any appropriate adjustments we need to make to the evaluations.
Counselor Schlag, or, I'm like, Counselor Shaw or Counselor Robbins, questions? Not seeing any hands. Okay, all right. I think that's it. Is that correct? Okay. I think somewhere in my stack, I'm supposed to say, is there anything else, or do I just adjourn? I can't, I can't find it. Okay, good night, Tigerd. Thank you all for being here, and this meeting is now adjourned. Good night.